Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council regular meeting on Tuesday, March 14th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. I would like to thank Mr. Barney and the students from Lake Havasu High School that are joining us this evening. Thank you so much for being here, seeing civics in action. All right, we'll now have an invocation from Pastor Dale Ray from the Lakeview Community Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Veterans United of Arizona, Frankie Lyons.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. The words of Paul from First Timothy, "I urge, first of all, that petitions, prayers, intercession, and thanksgiving be made for all people, for kings and all those in authority, that we may live peaceful and quiet lives in all godliness and holiness. This is good and pleases God, our Savior." Precious holy Father, we ask that you fulfill our city, our state, and national political leaders with your wisdom, your understanding, discernment, and knowledge. Grant them favor, increase their faith, and prepare them to pursue your excellence. I thank you for the men and women who serve our city in leadership roles, and I pray for them, and I pray for their families. Provide our leaders with reminders each day of why they decided to dedicate their lives to public service, and use that commitment to encourage them and give them peace in your precious name, Lord Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Thank you.
Greetings, everybody. I am the CEO, co-founder of Veterans United Arizona. We are going into the 10th year of service to our community and Mojave County. We've serviced every Bullhead, Kingman, Golden Valley. We've gone to Quartzsite, which is in La Paz, but we find a need there because some of our veterans have moved down there because it's cheaper to rent. We've worked diligently to help our city, help our veterans, and non-veterans as well. I'm going to turn this over to Woody. He's actually our president of our organization. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Woody, or Larry Woodrum. I'm president of Veterans United Arizona. I've been working with Frankie for approximately 10 years. We do a lot, telling you straight up. What we've got going on this weekend is we're trying to bring attention to those of the people in the community that are handicapped, that are stuck in wheelchairs, they're stuck in motorized wheelchairs, they're on walkers, they're on mobility scooters. So this coming weekend, we're having a poker run for them. So they can have a little fun, too. It's going to be coming, it's going to start at Salvation Army at 9:00 AM. If you're not signed up, or you'd like to get signed up, or accompany someone, or you know someone, bring them down to Salvation Army, 9:00 AM. We're going to start there. We're going to go down both sides, we're going to split up, go down both sides of Lake Havasu, I mean McCulloch Boulevard, and it's going to end up down at Matt's Havasu Mobility Scooters. He's going to have a big barbecue for everybody, and that's where we're going to be. So that's our latest event we've got coming up this weekend. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you for all that you do for our residents.
I'm not done. I want everybody to know that we appreciate all our sponsors. We appreciate the veterans stepping up and saying that we need help. Without them, we would have a real crisis in our city. But because of our police departments, we kind of work with them. When they tell us they have an issue, we go out there and try to assist them, getting the person to the right place at the right time. But without you guys in our city, we would be lost. But thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item four, which is our roll call. Ms. Williams, if you please call the roll.
Council members Nancy Campbell.
Here.
Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Cameron Moses.
Here.
Jenny Koch.
Here.
Jim Dolan.
Still here.
Vice Mayor David Lane.
Here.
Mayor Kalshihi.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item five is our consent agenda. Would any of the council members like to remove any of the items for separate discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Koch?
Motion?
Please.
Move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Koch, and we have a second from Vice Mayor Lane. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing number, ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item six on the agenda is Correspondence, Communications, Petitions, Announcements, and the City Manager Report. Item 6.1 is to announce vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, there are several vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Board of Adjustment, two alternate member positions. Anyone interested can pick up a packet at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website at LHCaz.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. And item 6.2 is the City Manager's Report. Good evening, Mr. Knudsen.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Sheehy and council members. We've had some activities since our last council meeting I'd like to share with you and our community. In a continued fight to preserve water in Lake Havasu, Mayor Sheehy, you, as well as our city attorney Kelly Gary, and Jamie Kelly, who is the attorney for the Mojave County Water Authority, you all attended a federal court oral argument in Phoenix in opposition of a proposed partial water transfer of fourth priority Colorado River water to the town of Queen Creek. Mayor, you proclaimed March 11th as Seroctumist International of Lake Havasu City Day in honor of their second annual Southwest Chowder Fest. Both councilmembers Michelle Lynn and Cameron Moses participated, and congratulations to Councilmember Moses and Chebon's Steakhouse for receiving the Golden Ladle Chefs Award for winning first place in the restaurant division. Mayor, you attended another Freedom Walkway event at the Bridgewater Channel to celebrate the unveiling of 380 newly engraved bricks installed by our Public Works crews in honor of veterans, Navho code talkers, first responders, Havasu pioneers, healthcare workers, and the newly added sections honoring our beloved educators, and for the 58 victims of the Las Vegas Route 91 shooting. Mayor, you proclaimed March 3rd as Teen Challenge Banquet Day in Lake Havasu City, committing Teen Challenge Arizona for their efforts in eradicating drug abuse across the state. And finally, Mayor, you join councilmembers and staff attending Dr. Seuss's Read Across America events at various elementary schools to help promote reading as a catalyst for our students' future academic success. Lots of great things. Mayor, you were joined by councilmembers Nancy Campbell and Councilmember Cameron Moses, as well as Councilmember Jenny Koch, and you talked to the students from Our Lady of the Lake and Havasu Preparatory Academy's Patriotic Americans for Constitutional Education, otherwise known as PACE. The discussions revolved around the Constitution and how it applies to serving as elected official at the local level. And finally, another reminder to everybody in the community that on Wednesday, March 29th, at 10:30 AM, we will celebrate our veterans and these milestones, and their milestones. The city, along with the Elks Lodge 2399, the Friends of the Fair, Marine Corps League 757, and many veteran organizations, is hosting another Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day Outdoor Cookout Event at the Friends of the Fair Rodeo Grounds. All veterans are invited to attend this event. No RSVP is required. And Mayor and Council, that concludes my presentation for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knudsen. All right, we'll move on to item seven, which are public hearings. During each of the next series of public hearings, will be an opportunity for citizens to engage with the council on each of these items. If you do come during the public hearing, there is a light indicator box next to Ms. Williams. Green means you have time, yellow means that you have one minute remaining, and red means that your time limit is up to speak during the public hearing. We ask that you address the city council, so just make sure if you have any comments on that particular item, to address the council directly. And if you have a comment, we encourage you to do it during the public hearing about an item, so we can have a two-way conversation. Otherwise, at the end of our meeting, we will have a call to the public, which is an opportunity for citizens to address the council within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City, but we can't have a two-way conversation on that particular item. So we'll start with our first public hearing, which is item 7.1, which is a presentation from Weldon Financial Services on the 2023 Utility Cost of Service Rate Study. Mr. Kozlowski?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the item to kick off the utility rate study discussion. As you all are aware, the city previously conducted a rate study in 2001 and set rates for one year. That timeline has since ended, and it is now time to review rates and conduct a second rate study. The goals of this study is to provide a comprehensive view of rates, rate structures, capital replacement and expansion to establish appropriate future rate levels for the next five years. It is also necessary for the city to determine the appropriate level of future revenues to convert the costs associated with future maintenance needs of the system. Weldon Financial Services is here to provide a presentation which will recap the previous rate study and current rate structures. Take a look at the 10-year CIP and the impact that future rates will have on that, review comparable cities and their current rate structures for water and wastewater, and look at the pricing objectives, which some of you provided feedback on. The goals of this discussion tonight is to provide Weldon with an additional ideas for the rates, provide confirmation on the pricing objective, and any additional ideas or thoughts as we begin the process of preparing the new rate structure. And with that, I will turn it over to Kevin Burnett and Pat Walker with Weldon Financial Services for their presentation. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Anthony. It's good to be back. I'm Kevin Burnett. Pat's on the phone, I believe, at this point in time. So as Anthony said, we wanted to get some feedback from you all in terms of the last rate structure, where we want to go moving forward, so that since we're at the beginning of the process, the more information we can get now, the easier it is for us to incorporate it into the rate structure as we move forward. But with that being said, it doesn't mean if you don't tell us something today that we're just going to ignore it if it comes in, you know, two or three weeks down the road. We still want that feedback, but the earlier we can get the feedback, the smoother the process will be. So with that said, next slide, Anthony. So where we wanted to start was just a recap of the last study. So we made some fairly significant changes to the rate structure, both on the water and the sewer side. So we wanted to find out what worked well in the last study. Were there aspects of the rate structure that you liked, that you want to see continue to move forward, maybe just be tweaked a little bit? Are there things that you really didn't like at all that we need to go back to the drawing board on, start over again? Is there a different focus for this study? Water conservation is something that's come up at the staff level as we've been starting this project, but are there other objectives that's important to council? So whether you want to jump in now, or you want to think on it a little bit and get back to us, whatever your preference is.
Yeah, Mr. Burnett, maybe if you go through your slides, and then we'll open it up for council discussion, and we can engage in some of those questions as well.
Sure.
Thank you.
So then, next slide. So as Anthony mentioned, we've got the 10-year capital improvement program. So we're looking at, on the water side, $135.6 million over the next 10 years, so roughly $13.5 million a year in CIP, which is a fairly significant increase from where we were in the last study. And then on the sewer side, we're looking at $94,900,000 over the next 10 years, so $9.4 million, $9.5 million roughly over a year on average. Again, that's a fairly significant increase from where we were previously. So to put some things in a little bit of context here, so based on your fiscal year '22, '23 budget, if you were to increase your water expenses by $120,000 over what they are today, you would need a commensurate 1% increase in revenues in order to offset that. On the sewer side, based on the budget for '23, if you were to increase your expenses by $253,900 over what they are now, you would need a 1% increase in revenue there. So that's kind of at a high level. It's not to say that this is static. Certainly, if you were going to bond for some capital projects going forward, you wouldn't necessarily need to do, you know, a 10% increase to get $12 million, because the debt service, it would lower that down. And as we go forward, as more increases come into play, the amount of revenue that gets generated from an additional 1% increase changes, too. But that's just kind of some high-level context for you. The next slide. So the outstanding debt, so this is what you have on the books right now. So on the water side, you've got a 2007 issuance and a 2010, 2010 issuance. So the first one ends in 2027. It's about $400,000 a year in debt service. The 2010 issuance ends in 2030, and you're looking at about $209,000, $210,000 a year in debt service on that. On the sewer side, you've got a 2015 issuance that ends in 2035, $3.8 million in annual debt service. A 2015 AGO bonds, it ends in 2037. You've got a little over $5 million associated with that debt service. And then a 2015 B revenue bonds, which ends in 2045, and $4.6 million in annual debt service associated with that. Legal debt service coverage is 1.2x, so that's something that you have to maintain every year. The city targets 1.5x coverage, so that's your net revenues. For every dollar of debt outstanding, you need to have $1.20 of net revenues available. So that's the debt that you have on the books right now. Moving forward, that might be something that we want to look at as we're developing the financial plan, to smooth out some of those capital programs. If there's a year that has more capital than others, we might want to look at debt funding that to minimize the impact on rates. So that's something to consider. Looking at the rate comparisons, so this is where you're at today, based on your existing rate structure and your average use. So you can see Lake Havasu City at the bottom there at 1598. I can tell you that Kingman is undergoing a water rate study right now, so their rates are going to be going up from where they're at today. And Bullhead City is going to be starting a rate study probably in the next month and a half, two months, so those rates are probably going to go up from where they're at right now as well. On the sewer side, so there we've got Lake Havasu City towards the top half at 5566. Again, Bullhead City's going to be doing their rate study in the next month or two. They're going to get one kicked off. Kingman's not doing a sewer rate study just on the water side, so they won't be changing on this one. And then if we look at the combined, so that's where you are with both the water and sewer for the average single-family home. So Lake Havasu City's still in the bottom half there when you factor in both water and sewer combined. And again, Bullhead City's going to be moving, and so will Kingman. So a little bit of a recap on your current water rate structure. So the inside-outside-city differential was eliminated as part of the last rate study when the ADD sunsetted. The base charge, so that's the monthly charge that gets assessed to customers regardless of whether they have water use or how much water use they have every month, that's currently set at about a 30% cost recovery. So 30% of your revenue is coming from the base charge. When we typically look at water and sewer utilities, the fixed charge component, or what the city's fixed charges are, usually runs in the 80% to 90% range. There's very little in terms of variable costs associated with operating a water or sewer utility, but for purposes of the rate structure, and we'll talk a little bit more about this in a bit, 30% is kind of at the upper end that we see in terms of base charges. So then we've got the tier grade structures for everybody except for hydrants, so single family. So one of the changes we made was we had the first 500 cubic feet of water use every month included in the base charge, and then we had the subsequent tiers there. Multifamily, we changed those tiers last time around. Next slide. Commercial and industrial, so again, all of these have different tiers. The residential irrigation, so since the last rate study, that has largely been collapsed into the residential rate structure. So there's, right now, there's only 24 accounts that have both a domestic meter and a separate irrigation meter on the single-family side. Most of them just switched, and they do all the irrigating out of the domestic meter. And then we've still got the other irrigation customer class there. And finally, we've got RV parks as the last component of our water rate structure. So then on the sewer side, so we've got a base charge that's recovering about 75% of our costs there, and then we've got residential, so single-family apartments, condos, multifamilies, per-dwelling-unit base charge, and then 0 to 500 cubic feet included in the base charge in terms of sewer flows. There's a maximum monthly charge that can be assessed to those customers. And then on the commercial side, we had several categories last time. We consolidated them down into commercial motel and hotel, no-max monthly charge, flow charge for them, and then RV parks per space. So with that recap, we'll get into, as Anthony said, some of the pricing objectives, some of the goals, what we're trying to accomplish through our rate structure. I'm not going to go through all of these, I'll just hit on some of them. So the big ones that we normally come across, Pat and I will come across, revenue stability is always up near the top for us. That's making sure that you have enough money coming in every month to be able to pay your bills, to be able to take care of that debt service we were talking about, that big CIP program, making sure that's all taken care of. The other one in this day and age that we're seeing more and more is the bottom one there, water conservation. Making sure that people aren't wasteful of their water because it is a limited resource, and we need to make sure that we have some, and it's expensive and difficult to go out and acquire additional water resources should that come into play. The difficulty that we have here, and we've had this discussion before, is revenue stability and water conservation are going to be competing objectives when we try and do this. If we were to design a rate structure based on revenue stability alone, that 30% base charge we were talking about on water, we'd push that up to 80%, 90% of your revenue coming through the base charge, so that Jill knows how much revenue is going to be coming in every month. It makes it easier for her to do her forecasting, for her to do her budgeting. The more we get from the base charge, the less we're getting from the volume rate. We can't send a conservation signal. It doesn't really matter how much water you use if you've got 90% of your revenue coming from the base charge. That's such a small component of your bill, you're not going to get a price signal, it's not going to incentivize you to conserve. So the other side of that is, the more you put into the water conservation, the less you're getting out of the base charge, the less revenue stability that you have. So next slide. Cost of service equity is one that comes up fairly often for us, making sure that each customer is paying their proportionate share of costs, based on how they use the system, making sure that they're paying their share, one class isn't subsidizing another. And then the customer impact's always a concern as well. How is this going to affect our customers if we change rate structures? So with that, we went through the ranking process. We did these pricing objectives last time around, so you can see where we were in the prior study. Revenue stability at the top, followed by cost of service and customer acceptance. Last time, we just did it at the staff level. This time, we asked staff and council to do it, so we appreciate you doing the homework that we gave you. So you can see on the current study there, revenue stability is still number one. Water conservation jumped up fairly significantly from where it was before, and then we've got customer impact and cost of service equity to round out the top three. There was a tie between the bottom two there. So again, we're going to have that competing objectives between the revenue stability and water conservation that will have to balance as we move forward. So with that, we want to talk a little bit about rate structures. We've had some preliminary discussions with staff. We've gotten some sense from what they're looking for, some thoughts that they have, based on what they're seeing and where things ended up last time, but we certainly want to hear from you all as well. Some of the things that we talked about in our staff meeting were, on the water side, potentially reducing the allotment in Tier One for residential. So where we've currently got 0 to 500 cubic feet included in the base charge, maybe we want to lower that to 200, as an example. Or is there a different number that we should use? Is it 300 is the right number? Is it 100? So that was something that came up. Adjusting the amount of water in each tier, so we kind of quickly went through what the different tiers were. So we can change what the usage allotment is in each of those tiers, and that'll go towards the conservation, as well as the revenue stability that we were talking about. So how much water do we want to provide in each tier, and do we have the right number of tiers? Should we be expanding the number of tiers or reducing the number of tiers? One of the things that we heard from the last study was, because of the timing of the rate study, and when budgets have to be developed for multifamilies, for condos, for RV parks, it's difficult for them to make the adjustment to their annual budgets based on when the rate study gets completed. So to the extent that we can be more communicative with them, phase in rates for those customer classes over time, give them a chance to design their budget so that they can absorb and adjust to some of these rate structures, that's certainly something we want to take a look at and try and help out with this time around. So a little bit more discussion on the rate structure. One of the thoughts that we had was potentially charging a higher base charge for zero-water-use customers. So as I said before, the city's costs are fixed, are largely fixed on the water side, 80% to 90%. So when we're only recovering 30% from the base charge, if we have customers that don't have any water use, they're not contributing to that 80% to 90% fixed charge the way that somebody who is using the system and does have water use every month. So that was something that we talked about. So I'll talk about that a little bit more later, but one of the thoughts that we had was, so if your current base charge is $9 a month, maybe it's $9 a month if you have water use every month. If you don't have any water use that month, it's $14 as the base charge, something like that, so that they're potentially contributing more to the fixed costs on the system. It could be administratively burdensome to the city. That's one of the issues. We're not sure whether the billing system can automatically detect whether or not a customer has water usage that month, and then which base charge they would get billed, or if that's something that staff would have to do manually, so that's a consideration. And it may be difficult or confusing to customers. So if they have water use one month, they get one base charge. If they're not using water the next month, they have a different base charge. Is that going to get too confusing for the customers? So next slide. So in terms of the higher base charge, so a higher percentage of recovery, so if we were to go above the 30% that we have right now, that would be an option. Again, it provides revenue stability, but the more you put into the base charge, the more impact it has on the lower-volume users, because more of their bill is going to be made up of that base charge, and they have less ability to control what their monthly bill is going to be. It also, as I said, limits the ability to send the conservation message through the volume rate. The flip side of that is the conservation tier grades. So as you progress through the tiers, you pay a higher unit cost, it sends the conservation signal, you have more control over your monthly bill, you can choose to cut back on your water use and lower your bill. Those who use more pay more, but if it's successful, then you sell less water, and it becomes more financially unstable for the city because you don't know how much revenue you're going to be having coming in. So we talked a little bit about drought rates with staff. Is that something that we should be considering at this point in time and have drought rates developed so that if the city does declare a different stage drought, that we've got the rates already in place, that they can be enacted? We talked about rebate programs, some potentially looking at what's available at the state level. What are other cities doing in terms of rebate programs? Is that something that we could be implementing here in Lake Havasu City to help with the lower-income water users? On the sewer side, one of the things that we talked about was getting away from the flow base charge, where right now you have a base charge and then a flow component based on your average winter consumption. One of the ideas that we had, or staff talked about, was just doing away with that dual system and just saying it's a flat charge for everybody, and not having the average winter consumption or the flow component. I mentioned before that we consolidated last time on the commercial side the number of customer classes we have. Do we have the right number of customer classes now? Do we have the right makeup? Do we need to develop more, consolidate more? Next slide. In terms of the flat charge on the residential side, it depends, it's equitable depending upon how you define equity. So you could make the argument that it's equitable, that everybody's paying the same amount every month. So everybody's going to be paying $25 a month for their sewer. I could define that as equity. On the other hand, I could say that's inequitable, because if I live by myself, I'm paying $25 a month, my neighbor has six kids, they're also paying $25 a month. Chances are, if they have six kids, they're using a lot more water than I am, they have more sewer discharge every month than I do. Why are they not paying more? So it depends how you define equity on that front. It is definitely easier for customers to understand, they know what the monthly bill's going to be every month, they don't have to worry about their average winter consumption. It provides greater revenue stability, because you know how much revenue you're going to be getting every month, because it's a flat charge. And then it would, the vacation homes, part-time residents would be contributing at the same rate as the full-time residents are, because it's the same flat charge for everyone. Again, getting into the existing customer classes, we're looking at equity through the rate specific to the class rather than an average. That's where we went last time, was we took more of an average as opposed to individual customer classes. Do we have the right number? Do we have the right mix? Have we identified the right customer classes? The more customer classes you add in, it can be viewed as being subjective or arbitrary in terms of who it can be viewed as being subjective or arbitrary in terms of who fits into which of these customer classes, and why did you pick those specific customer classes? And it's also more administratively burdensome from staff in terms of making sure the billing is correct, and when somebody calls in and they're trying to decide what customer class they fall into. So, those are considerations to take into account as well. Next slide. So then to wrap up, we wanted to get some feedback on the timing of the study. So, when do we want to have council sessions, how often do you want to see us? What are you looking for in terms of the effective date of new rates? And stakeholder meetings, we want to make sure that we do the proper outreach. So, how many stakeholder meetings do you want to see, when do you want to see them? Do you want to see them throughout the process, more towards the end? So I've given you a lot to chew on, hopefully, so we're looking forward to your feedback.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Burnett, and welcome back to Lake Havasu City. I really look forward to pushing through on this. Did Ms. Walker have something to say, maybe? No? I didn't know if I heard something.
I'm here. No, I think that Kevin covered it, there's a lot of information here, but what really the takeaways we want is some direction from council as to what each of council members are thinking as we start this study. We'd rather do it now than later in the study, and just get all thoughts and ideas out tonight if we can.
Yeah, absolutely, I think we'll be able to have that conversation and get some good feedback. So, going back to the beginning of your presentation, that's kind of a recap of the last study, what we did at that time and the current rate structure that we have. As you had mentioned, we have a little over a year now of historical data based on how ratepayers are paying, based on the current cycle, so we know revenue flows and outputs and the like, which is very helpful. But I think for tonight's discussion and going forward, we really need to focus on what we want to do going forward. So, you know, what was in the past is in the past, let's really stay focused on going forward on this. From my perspective, I do value the conservation method, I think conservation is very important during these discussions. Surprisingly, a lot has changed since we implemented this with hydrology of the river system. And so I think conservation needs to be a top priority as we're setting this rate structure going forward. I understand that the stability piece as well, but I think the conservation piece is most important. There are a few things that we've learned from the current rate structure from just a staff operational standpoint, I think those should be addressed. And maybe Mr. Kozlowski or Mr. Knutson can give some background on the specifics of what that is, I just know they're out there, but I think we should get those addressed going forward. And then we should have some certainty in what the CIP is going to be, which is obviously in front of us here tonight with the 10-year CIP, which gives the system stability. Now, these are all planned items, so we're talking about really large volumes here, but these are planned items on how we maintain a system over a 10-year period to ensure that we don't have water or wastewater system issues going forward. And then some, just for a little bit of backstory, when the debt was refinanced for the sewer back in 2015, the intent was for it to have that be long-term, so that current ratepayers from 2015 to today, and then into their expiration in 2037 or 2045, were paying a piece of the infrastructure in which they're using. So it wasn't front-loaded that all of the current ratepayers of the day, which would have been 2015, and of today, were paying for infrastructure for future residents that would be coming here at a later time that would be using the same infrastructure that we have. And of course, Mr. Burnett made it very clear, which we know, we do have a lot of seasonal usage within our system. And even though they're not using the system, maybe six months out of the year, or three months, or whatever it might be, we still are having to pay for infrastructure to support that. So how do you balance that piece with conservation from, again, that's just my perspective of where I think the rate should be. So with that, I'll open it up to other members of the council to share your thoughts on where we're at and what you value the most. Councilmember Dolan?
I guess I'll jump in.
Thank you.
It's a pretty unpopular thing that we're doing, looking at raising rates. But the one thing, the perspective I like to try to give people is, the city is running a not-for-profit water company. And I, as a user of that, am so grateful for that, that a not-for-profit city is doing that, because pretty much any money we pay into the system goes for the infrastructure. If this was privately owned, our rates would be a lot higher, and we wouldn't have these meetings to discuss, should we charge more, should we do this, what's best for this person or that person? You just get a new bill every single month, because that's what the company in Canada or wherever they're out of would just give you to the bill, such as Unisource and the internet companies, you realize, so your rate goes up every month. So, just to kind of keep that in mind, it's, tax dollars are also not used on this system. It's revenue generated from the fees themselves. So, prior to this, what also, what started this is we hadn't raised rates in what, I believe it was 12 years. And it's, I'm very proud of what the council has done by starting this last year and continuing it. And it's hard to get it exactly dialed in the way it should be. So, you know, we have a year and a half into it now, and we're looking at it again. But, I hate paying too much for stuff, but I also hate not being able to flush the toilet, you know? So, we have seen a lot of water breaks and mains break all over town, and we have an infrastructure that's 50 years old, that was built by many, many, many contractors that aren't here anymore, and that did it for the cheapest price, and some were inspected, some weren't. You know, so like I said, we have a, I lived in the older part of town off Smoke Tree there, and you'd get, everybody on the street had to replace their sewer at some point, because all the roots would get into it for the pipes. And so I like the fact that we are, we're having a plan, we're looking at what money needs to be spent in the future, and we're not just constantly putting out fires. So, with that in mind, I do like the idea of some sort of the drought rates, I like the water conservation. I want us to kind of ease into that, I think. I like the fact that if I'm using more water than my neighbor, I should be paying for more. I think a lot of it is, I was a big proponent of the last time that we include the 500 units in there, because I think, I use my parents as an example, two retirees, what they're using, I think they were using 300 or 400. To have that stable bill every month, they know exactly what they're going to be paid, but they also, they do watch what they use, they don't do a lot of landscaping. And while maybe their neighbor has grass in their backyard, great, if you want to put grass in your backyard and there's droughts, well, you may need to pay a lot of money to water that. So, I, like I said, I do like the drought rate idea. I'd maybe like to see it something that, when a drought is issued, then we have that ability to implement that. Because I think a lot of the water use we're also looking at is landscaping. And myself, for one, you know, you don't really realize what your water usage is until you start talking about it. And so I've cut down on my watering, and I think just having that discussion, I think a lot of people will do that, too. The problem with conservation is, when you start encouraging people to use less water, they're going to use less water. And, but then you're going to also tell them that their bill goes up, because we still have to pay for the infrastructure. So, like I said, that's why I like the drought rates as the drought happens. So, other than that, like I said, I'm looking forward to the process, and I think we're, I think it's definitely good to have a plan, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Dolan. A clarification on the drought rates, the way I understood it, and maybe Mr. Burnett can mention it. So we would have a, we're going to talk about a five-year rate structure for water and wastewater. And in addition, drought rates that can be implemented should a certain drought tier be called? Is that how?
That's what we were discussing at the staff level, yes, that if your council was to declare a stage true drought, stage two drought, for example, then new drought rates would kick in just during the period that you've declared the drought, and then they would go away once the drought was over.
Okay, so is that how you understood it, Councilmember Dolan?
Yes, like when there's actually a wet water shortage, we have drought rates that we can implement straight away to encourage people to use less at that point.
Yeah, perfect, just want to make sure we're all starting at the same spot. And then also, just for the record, we're at a stage to be drought called by Bureau of Reclamation, just so we know where we're at with that. All right, any other councilmembers have, Councilmember Campbell?
I do, and I'm going to start with a statement, if it's not broken, don't fix it. I'm looking at the 2009, 10, and 11 minutes of the meetings from previous, and when they did the increase of an 8% across the board. Then I am fast-forwarding to 2020 and 21 budget sessions, where we had a surplus of extra money in the account at that time. There was winter rate averaging, which I've talked to many experts, and they thought that that was a really positive way to doing it. So again, we did this for, since 2010 or 11 up to current, we were, had cash flow in the bank. What I'm saying moving forward is, what does that number look like? As a percentage, in this case, they went up for 8%, and they reviewed it again three years later. So, these are the direction, obviously, we're just pulling, I don't want to pull numbers from the sky like we did before, because that cost us anywhere between $3 and $5 million, and I don't think that's what we need to do. So we're way behind now that we waited a year. So, this is my direction, my direction is if you, you know, why fix something that's not even broken? Let's go back to the rate study that we had before, and then look at the adequate increases that we need to supply the goods and services for our community. And that's, I think, pretty clear, my statement on that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell. So, is the winter quarterly averaging, that's a strategy of conservation-based pricing? Is that how I would understand that? Or, what is winter quarterly averaging due to rates? I know it gives citizens, or excuse me, ratepayers, the opportunity to adjust their usage, but would that be considered a conservation method, or what would that be considered in our list of options?
Yeah, so normally, your winter quarter averaging is on the sewer side, so the idea is to try and use the winter quarter average, that's when the water use is going into the sewer system as opposed to irrigation and on the lawn and that kind of thing. So for purposes of calculating your sewer bill, we often look at the winter quarter averaging in terms of, you know, calculating your sewer flows. With that being said, though, there is some interrelation between the sewer side and the water side to the extent that if you lower your sewer bill by cutting back on your water use in the winter months, then you're also going to be serving on the water side overall during the year. So, if you have that winter quarter averaging, there is that connection, a little bit of a connection there on the water side and the conservation side. If you were to do away with that and go with a flat rate, then you don't really have that winter incentive to conserve on the sewer side, to reduce your sewer bill during that winter quarter average period. So you might actually see more water use during the winter quarter than you otherwise would, just because it no longer affects what you're going to be paying every month in sewer.
Okay.
Mayor, one other part to this that I didn't bring up was back in, after this rate study went into effect, there was a, the HOAs once again were disappointed with the direction that they were going. The staff came back and the council came back and had a massive discussion, and I think you were a part of that, on how we can make it a win-win for the HOAs and actual the rates themselves. And so, at the end of that, there was a wonderful solution to that. And I know that everybody keeps saying that the HOAs spend more money, but they never even took into place that even a 500-square-foot unit was paying $138 per parcel into property taxes on top of that. So what we need, what I would like to see moving forward is, how do we incorporate that $5.7 million back into the fee structure that we desperately need, because everybody got a tax break? We understand that you can't, that money has to be replaced, but then again, what percentage over the next three years would we have to go up? Again, we did come into this in 2020, 21 with cash flow in our bank, we were not going broke, and we have spent a lot of money on infrastructure in the last two years, which, last five years, I think the CIPs that we've been spending on wells, and we've done a lot of really positive work and still have money in the bank. So, when you pull all the depreciation and all those other items out of it, I know we have debt services as well, but I just want to say, why fix something that's not broken? Let's go back and look at those numbers like they did 10 or 11 years ago, and continue to move forward. Thank you.
So, Councilmember Campbell, I don't know what you're saying, because I think that's what we're doing here, right? Is we're doing a rate study like we did in 2011? Like, that's the process we're going through now with different numbers. So, are you supportive of a winter quarterly averaging or water conservation? I'm just trying to make sure we get the correct direction out of the gate here of what it is you would like to see.
I'm supporting not changing categories, not trying to just go into a drought, tier changes, what if we have reductions? What if we just stick to the same plan we have that we had prior before? And then just find up the proper percentage margins, that's what we need to do. I don't want to be changing categories from before, I don't want to be putting in drought tiers from before, assuming we're going to know what the future brings, or how humans are going to react, is that our customers are going to react with these, and then end up upside down again. I just want, why fix something that's not broken? We can always encourage our citizens to conserve water. It's obvious that we all need to be working on irrigation probably more than anything. We've already had enough people come through here to let us know that. But, again, that's just educating our citizens on water conservation, but we also have reduced our water usage. We championed, as you used the words, over and over on how well the citizens in this community have responded to water conservation. So, to me, I just worry that we're in the future, we're going to get into more trouble later, and why can't we just say, let's take another look at it in two to three years, once we get all these numbers in place? And we need Weldon and the staff to get us there and to give us the right direction, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, members of the council, Vice Mayor Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate it. I definitely agree with the use more, pay more. That's the conservation, you use more water, you're going to pay more money, that's pretty simple. I also, I'd kind of like to see a comparison, you know, we have the city of Lake Havasu, and that's what we're talking about for water, but we have people that live in the unincorporated part of Lake Havasu City, of Lake Havasu, that don't use our water system. They use Epcor or whatever they use. I'd kind of like to see the comparison of what the people that live in Lake Havasu but not within the city limits, like, you know, just around the peripheral of the city, Desert Hills, Donkey Acres, those areas, to see what they're paying is what our citizens are paying, if that's a possibility. When it comes to the seasonal lots, I'm curious, how does that work with the vacant lots? With the seasonal lots, we're still supplying the infrastructure to that location. Same with the vacant lots, we're supplying the infrastructure that goes right past that lot, so when they want to hook up to it, it's there. Is there a way to capture some revenue from the people that sit on their lot, they live out of state? If they ever decide to build, the infrastructure's already there. I don't know if there's a way to capture that or not, but I'd like to see that. Then, when we get to, we also need to make sure that people are paying their fair share. What we found during the last study was that there were certain categories that were paying way less than what their fare should have been, so it should be fair share. One thing that we also have to remember, you mentioned the word bond. We do have bonds, we're paying that, debt service is a big part of what our rates are paying for now. And, Mr. Knutson, you probably tell me, it's more than 50% of what we pay now, is that correct? Or somewhere in that ballpark?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Lane, yeah, a little over 50% on the sewer side of the rate collected, it all goes towards debt.
It all goes towards our debt. We don't want to take on any more debt. Everything that we're talking about, and we talk about the CIP, and for the students that are here, the CIP is our capital improvement projects. Those are the projects where we're improving our infrastructure. And we need to make sure that we're keeping our infrastructure built and upgraded, there's no deferred maintenance, and we're not borrowing any money to do that, we're paying cash for that, because debt service costs us money. And we don't want to take out bonds and have additional debt service than what we already have. And with that, when we talk about deferred maintenance, we have deferred maintenance all over the city. We hear people talk about, we need to put more money into roads, we need to put more money into this building here. There's different things we need to put money into where there's deferred maintenance. We cannot afford to have deferred maintenance on our water and our sewer system. It doesn't take long to, and you don't have to look very far, you can look right here and right across the lake, and right in the unincorporated area around here, of infrastructure that was not kept up, and there was deferred maintenance, and now it's collapsing. And you see, right across the lake, they're still using bottled water. We don't want that, we have to make sure that we are maintained all the time, so that when you turn on that faucet, water comes out. And when you've pushed that handle down, all the bad stuff goes away. We can't have deferred maintenance on these two systems. We own the systems, as Councilmember Dolan said, this is a nonprofit. However much money it takes, that's how much money we have to collect, and we have to make sure everybody's paying their fair share. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor Lane. It's my understanding on the vacant lots that every vacant lot would have to pay the $2,000 sewer hookup fee, is that correct? I think that's how they are paying their share of the infrastructure, like we all had to pay, just at the point in where they, so I think that's where we're at for that, but if we want to discuss that option further, that's where we're currently at.
Well, I would just need to make sure that that is the appropriate hookup fee for this, so that they are paying their fair share, and thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Koch?
Yeah, as part of that council conversation, we had to take out those bonds to take care of that debt. That was something that we were handed by way of mandate of having to put this sewer system in. And so those bonds were a necessary evil that none of us really appreciated. But we got through that process and we tried to do it to the least amount of impact to the citizens at the time. But something that was brought up, and just out of curiosity, on one of your slides on your current rate, water rate structure, you indicated that on the residential irrigation, we're reduced to 24 accounts. If we were to go back to your winter averaging, would that affect that? Because did a lot of the residents then do away with those? And wasn't that part of the process where you had a separate irrigation meter, so you weren't paying the sewer on that? Or is that something different that I'm not?
No, I, I think that was in part, part of that, part of it was the winter quarter averaging and making sure that there was the distinction between what's being used domestically and what's being used to irrigate and having that separate irrigation meter so that it wasn't counting towards your, your sewer flows. And then I think part of the change was when we changed the rate structure and we made it more expensive for irrigation customers, that's why they did away with those irrigation meters and went back to the
Correct. So if we were to even look at that option, we'd have to really take a big look at what impact that would have at those people that have gone away from that, because I don't know how many it was initially. But if it went down to 24, it's just something we need to be cognizant of and pay attention to. And then also just really making sure that we're having the conversations with those multifamily. I, for whatever reason, I'm not the smartest one in the room. I just have never lived in a townhouse or a townhouse or condo or HOA. So when we talked about these structures, to me, I thought that was just general knowledge that the prices were what they were. And then everybody else was not in the same boat. So just making sure that we have those conversations with those HOA groups and making sure they're at the table is really important so that there's no big shocks at the end of the day. I think that was a big lack of communication and to no one's fault, but that's very important.
Thank you, Councilmember Coke. There, Councilmember Moses?
Yeah, thank you. I have a couple of questions, actually, before I kind of tell you my kind of direction I always want to go. But I kind of just want to kind of get an understanding of how, you know, we have, if you look at your rankings of priorities, revenue stability and water conservation are right there at the top. And those are in direct conflict of each other. How do you manage that? What's the best approach to managing both those being our top two priorities?
That's the challenge that Pat and I have when we try and do this. So as I said, so the 30% that you're at right now in your base charge, that's kind of on the upper limit that we typically see on the water rates, on the water system side. So some of what we try and do is maybe lower that a little bit, bring it down from like 30% to 25%, but then have a lower first tier water usage so that we're trying to capture what we would regularly capture during the, from the base charge. We capture through either through the base charge and maybe the first tier, maybe a little bit into the second tier, but try and make that up through the first tiers there. And then be a little bit more aggressive as we progress through the tiers so that instead of maybe having one and a quarter times difference between tier one and tier two, we go one and a half price unit between tier one and tier two. Between tier two and tier three, we might jump up to two times or something like that. So that we're getting more aggressive as we go up through the tiers. But we still have the fairly low first tier so that we're not gouging people that are just using water domestically responsibly, that kind of thing. And then try and capture our, our revenues through the base charge and the first tier there. But it's definitely a challenge.
Yeah. One more question. How do you, how do you figure the cost of service equity, you know? How do you figure that? How do you know that a restaurant is more than a mechanic? Or that a hotel, you know, how does? What all goes into those calculations?
So it's going to be different between water and sewer. So on the sewer side, it's primarily driven by strength. So the suspended solids and the BOD that's in the sewer flow. So a restaurant with their grease traps is going to have a higher concentration of their discharge than a single-family home would, which is going to have a different discharge than a bookstore would with just an employee bathroom. So on the sewer side, it's largely based on the amount of flow and then the strength of that flow itself. On the water side, we look at the, the number of customers in a customer class. So how much of the admin costs, customer service costs are we going to allocate to that class based on the number of customers? And then it gets into flows, the amount of flows, and then the, the peak demands. So the way we often look at it is, if we lived in a perfect world, everybody would use the same amount of water every month. And Greg could size the system so that it carried the same amount of water, conveyed the same amount of water every single month. That would be an efficient way for him to design the system. It would be an efficient way for him to maintain the system. That's not the world that we live in. We live in a world where usually January, February has less water use. It's mostly domestic, maybe some, some irrigation use. And then you get into the July, August, September periods where the water use spikes. So he has to size the pipes to be able to, to convey that amount of water during those peak use periods. So as part of the cost of service analysis, we look at what is the difference between the average use for this customer class and their peak month use for that customer class? So then we allocate the cost of sizing the system based on who has the biggest peaking factors within. So to that extent, it's not usually getting to the restaurant or a hotel level. It's more, you know, residential class versus irrigation class versus. So it's usually more specific on the sewer side, but that's the high level, if that answers your question.
It does, yeah. Makes sense. Thank you. And can, can you speak to a home versus multifamily? Because in the past, and we're talking about going back to the past, in the past, we've charged less to, to people who live in a condo versus two people who live in a home. Does it cost less to deliver to those condo people?
So the, the industry data is a little bit at odds with each other. Part of the industry data says that if you live in a multifamily or if you live in, in a condo unit, chances are there's a separate irrigation meter. So the water use is already segregated out between an irrigation use and an indoor or domestic water use. Generally speaking, too, what the industry data would suggest is that condo units and multifamily units tend to have fewer people living in them than a single-family home does. Therefore, the, the industry standard factor is anywhere between 70 to 80% of single-family use goes to a multifamily or condo. At the same time, there's also industry data that says a lot of these multifamilies and HOAs, their water bill is baked into their monthly rent or their monthly HOA dues. So they really don't have the incentive to conserve water every month. They're not as conscious as the single-family home is. They can just leave the water running while they're doing their dishes because they don't see the water bill at the end of the month anyways. It's just built into the, so. By and large, though, it's generally speaking more towards the 70 to 80% of single-family use because it's usually a smaller population. But there's not an exact rule that says every single-family home is going to have more than a multifamily and vice versa.
Okay, but, and thank you. If we took a more water conservation centric approach, wouldn't that take out some of those inconsistencies, you know what I mean? Because it's the base rate that would be unfair to the, but if we had a more conservative conservation approach, it would make some of those inequities mitigated.
Yes, if I'm understanding your question correctly, the base charge would come down and more of it would go into the volume component, which by and large should be coming from the single-family is going to have more water use. So they would pay more through that conservation and send more of the conservation signal to them. And the, the multifamily and the condos would benefit from the lower base charge because of that.
Okay. And then before I make way in on the drought rates, can you predict if we were to, you know, if we raise a bill $10 or something, can you predict how much that would actually save us? You know, how much would we be able to take off our allotment? You see where I'm going with this? If we implement a drought rate, how much is that going to reduce our, our strain on the system? Would you be able to predict something like that?
So I think what you're asking is if we were to increase your monthly bill by $10, would that cause a 2% reduction in your water use or a 5% or whatever? Again, there's, there's industry data out there and we can take a look at it and we can make, make some assumptions and projections based on that. Again, it's not going to be perfect. One of the stories that I often tell is the very first project that I worked on was for Park City, Utah. They wanted drought, they wanted drought rates in Park City, Utah. We had a customer come to the, to the client, or come to the council meeting and say, I'm Robert Redford's housekeeper. You can't charge enough water, enough for water to get him to conserve so that his grass isn't green when he comes here one month out of the year. So there's always going to be some of that that goes into it. But as a general rule of thumb, it's usually for every dollar increase in the bill, you see about a 1% decrease in, in water usage. And again, it's going to be different whether it's for irrigation or domestic use. You really don't see much conservation on the domestic side of that first tier. The more, the higher you go up through the tiers, the more conservation you're going to see.
Because I mean, I could, I, I think that's the only reason why we would do the drought approach is if we had to hit a certain number. So it's like, well, you know, how do we get down to that? How, how do we get to that number kind of deal?
So there is that aspect to drought rates. The other aspect to drought rates is the state has told us we need to cut back by 20%. So if we cut back by 20%, what do our drought rates need to be in order for us to still make our debt service payments and make our, our annual payments?
All right. One final question. Does Robert Redford know that you throw him under the bus someone?
He does not. I have not had the opportunity to meet him.
All right. Sorry, I, I too, I'll weigh in, just real, you know, big picture. I too would like to see a conservation approach. I was, that's how I was before, and I still kind of haven't wavered on that. I, I would like to see the drought rates. If in fact, we can show that it's actually going to work and we're going to get to where we need to be. I would like to see what a rebate program looks like. Because as we start charging for what waters should be charged for, there's going to be some negative effects on some people who just can't do it. So I would like to see what that looks like. And I want to echo Council Jenny that we need, we just need to make sure that the, the multifamilies can, the condo units can adjust. So that stepped approaches is, or whatever they need to, to get there. Granted, if we do a stepped approach, that just means their liability is going to be higher and drawn out over a longer period of time. But they just need to adjust to get there. I like the cost. I like, I like equity. I like, if you use it, you pay for it. And, and I'm a big fan of that. So I appreciate your time and thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Moses. Any additional discussion? So, Mr. Burnett, I do have a couple of questions. If you could maybe go over the 10-year capital improvement plan for both water and wastewater, how those numbers came to be and what your firm's involvement was in basically auditing that that's what we need?
It came from Greg.
Okay. Yes, maybe Mr. Frosley, if you could speak to, to what this is. Well, we already have five years that are approved in our current budget, but if you could maybe give us some idea?
Mr. Mayor, if I can, if I could see the conversation that come in from Mr. Frosley. And I think that's one thing I want to kind of put out there is that this is where the, what Greg, Mr. Frosley is going to talk about is the, the 10 years' worth of capital projects that are needed to maintain a healthy water system and a nonprofit water system, and as well as the healthy nonprofit sewer system. So this is really where the rates are derived from. The city has costs when it comes to personnel, vehicles, equipment, tools, to make sure that the systems are maintained, pipes are replaced and so forth. But the conversation that Mr. Frosley is about to have and highlights maybe some of these projects is how we use to start the rate process. This is the cost it takes to, to, to replace X amount of water main lines every single year on the sewer side. So the replacement and maintenance that's needed for our lift stations, for our pumps, for all of the equipment that, that takes place, three wastewater treatment plants, one water treatment plant. These cost a lot of money to, to maintain and replace equipment over, over years. And so I just want to kind of place that out there and I'll leave it to you, Greg, to maybe talk about how you worked with your team on identifying some of these projects. But this is where the rates begin. This is the nexus. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Mr. Counsel, or Mayor and Council. Our water system and our wastewater system, they're both quite complicated. We are built on a hill, as you all know. So our water system has seven different pressure zones, which require 26 water tanks and 14 booster stations to deliver water to the community. That's a lot of mechanical stuff. The wastewater system is a little bit newer, but also built on a hill, flows downhill, needs to be pumped back up to be treated. We have nearly 50 major lift stations in our wastewater system as well as three wastewater treatment plants. So again, a lot of mechanical things that need to be maintained, replaced over the years. Every 10 years, we try to do a master plan for both the water system and the wastewater system. Our water system master plan, the most recent one was completed in late 2017, 2018. Our wastewater master plan was just recently completed in late 2022. So what happens is we hire a firm and they come in and they do a complete evaluation of our systems. They identify any problem areas that we have existing that need to be fixed. They look at population growth. They look at areas that could develop in the near future, any potential annexations where we may have to expand our system. And then they work with the staff and myself to lay out the plan to be ready for that growth. At the same time, we have an aging system that's existing. I said, all those components, pumps need to be replaced, they need to be repaired. Those are also identified in the master plan and we put cost to it. So what you see here are real projects. Some of them are identified as Area A, Area B, expansion into areas that are within the city limits, within our sewer service area, but outside our water service area. There's no sewer there, but currently they're ripe for development. People are talking to us and there's no sewer available for them. Development pays for itself, but we have to have some place for them to dump into our city system. So we've got dollars allocated in future years for those projects. Not a lot of detail in them, but we know something has to happen. And you're right, every year the council adopts a five-year capital improvement plan. This is a 10-year plan. Every project you see in the five-year just came from our master plan. We open up, we, we check these off, we did these projects, we move on to the next year and add them in. So I don't know if that's enough detail for you this evening?
Yes, absolutely. No, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, then as the, the rate structure takes into account debt, which we talked about tonight, it takes into account the O and M, the operating maintenance, so our staff that runs the system, the capital improvement piece of it. If we want to have some rebate program, as Councilmember Moses mentioned, if we want to have some sort of a conservation-based program on rebates, those all have to come together and, and base out the rates. And as Councilmember Dolan mentioned, to come down to a net zero, so it's a nonprofit. So a couple of questions, I think, that we still owe you, Mr. Burnett, is council sessions and, and community engagement. I think we've heard from several members of the council, and I would echo that as well, that we do want to have engagement with our ratepayers, specifically multifamily, but others as well. There's, there's more ratepayers than, than just that. So I think if we could have some of those, and I would leave it up to you and Mr. Knudsen and his team, if that's best to do it in a work session and a town hall setting, a council meeting. I think we can do whatever that, that means, but the ratepayers need to have a say in this. I also think early on in the, the session, as, as we're mapping and modeling, I think if we could see the options of what real bills look like, that look like a Lake Havasu City bill that we're getting in the mail, so we can see the actual impacts from what the spreadsheet is. I think last time, and speaking on behalf of myself, we, we talked strategy and you did exactly what we told you. I just didn't then know what the calculation was going to look like on that final bill. And so if I could see that earlier on, I would be able to say, oh no, maybe that's not a decision that I, I would have championed or pushed through. So if we could, could do that, the new date, the date of the new rates, I would say everything we do is in fiscal year, starting July 1. Not that that's a hard and fast date, but I think a July 1 start date should be our target. And then as we're going through this, and if that's not possible, obviously we, we can be flexible. But I think as far as planning we, we can be flexible. But I think as far as planning perspective, unless any of my colleagues in council think otherwise, I think a July 1 should be, should be the, the start date. And then stakeholder meetings, I, I think we want stakeholder meetings. Do you need more information about what we think that is?
Well, yes, but I was just going to go back to your July 1. So that was something that we talked about at staff too. So as part of the process, there's legislative steps that we have to go through. So when you adopt the notice of intent, then there's a 30-day waiting period before you can have the public hearing. And then there's a 30-day waiting period before the rates become effective. So backing up from July 1. So that would mean we would have to have the public hearing to adopt it in beginning of June, which would mean we would have to have the notice of intent beginning of May. And we're at May, March 14th right now. So that's a little aggressive for us, but we certainly want to try and get this as quickly, but properly as we can. So.
And, and I would agree with that. So I, I think we have flexibility built into it, but I don't want to take our foot off of the pedal. I want to make sure that we're all having the discussion, the community is engaged in the process. They, they can see what rates they would pay. And again, we, we are aware of those statutory requirements and, and should a, a different date need to be appropriate, then I think we would be flexible in that. Is that, is there any additional information need, need from us to, tonight?
Um, no, I think that's pretty good.
Yeah. Mr. Knutson?
We, so I'm hearing a lot about water conservation. We get a lot of direction there too. Most of this conversations that's taken place so far is on the residential side. A conversation is that, what we're talking about here from council is that also apply to the commercial in terms of water conservation, tiering up for drought rates, those types of things as well too. I know we also, council had a conversation when the rates were additionally adopted, there was a change in the direction of how some of the commercial properties in Havasu were, were charged for, for water and sewer services. And some of that in some industries declined. And so maybe that's something we take a look at again to, to go in a direction that was more, more, more appropriate to the, the previous rate study. What do you guys think about commercial?
Yeah. Good question. Yeah. So when it comes to commercial, I mean, initially I would agree with the assessment that Mr. Knutson said. We, some of the commercial areas lowered because at the time, the, the very first meeting we had during the last rate study, we had said it cost a delivery model. And that's then what all the models were built on. That is then what was presented and which was adopted. I don't know that that was really where I thought it was going to go. So I, I think commercial, looking at what commercial was paying previous to this last 14 months is a good strategy to, to look back at and, and see where that goes. I don't know if anyone else has strong feelings on the commercial side. Obviously it needs to be equitable and fair for what the industry sectors pay. But also there is offsets of, of different commercial users that can help offset rates in, in different modeling. So yeah, Councilmember Moses, did you have a thought or, or Councilmember Lynn?
Yes.
As we're talking about the commercial users, I, I think I've had some concerns with, you know, we're talking about you use it, then you pay for it. And we have some major water users in our commercial area. And I think we need to take a bigger look at those higher water users. And, and when it comes to conservation, are they concerned, are, are we talking about how they're conserving? We're telling our residents, you know, take lesser showers, but are we telling some of these bigger companies, you know, what, what are they doing to reduce their costs in water? Like he said, you know, the actor doesn't care. They're going to pay it no matter what. The grocery store is going to pay their water bill. They don't, they don't, they don't care. They're not going to try to conserve. So I think we really need to look at that. I don't have a lot to say because I'm trying to process everything that we're going through because I don't want to make the same mistake we made before. I'm wondering what that base charge looks like. I don't, I don't really fully understand what that looks like on multifamilies and what that looks like with single families or commercial. I'd like to see a little bit more of what that actually looks like. I'd like to see an actual bill. With that, that's really all I have to say right now. But I really think we have to take a really big look on the hot, higher water users, especially in the commercial part.
Thank you. Councilmember Moses, did you have a comment? Are there any additional feedback on commercial? Councilmember Campbell, did you have a comment?
Well, again, I'm just going to ask my counsel in front of the, the public to go to like page seven. And I know that says water rate comparisons from different cities, showing Lake Havasu City as one of the lowest for water. And we have actual data from previous years. You know, the only real data we don't have is what we did last year because that was all over the place. So if we go back to the 2020, look at what our rates were. And even at this particular, we know the IDD just on water rate alone is about a 50% hit. It's a five, we bring in about 10 million and 5 million of it was the IDD, correct? So we, it's not hard to do the math, but that's 50%. If you look at page seven where it says water rate comparison, a water rate person, I don't, it's pretty consistent with commercial and residential, that it, we need 50% more money almost just to cover that. Not almost, we need 50% more money to call, cover just the IDD loss. So if you look at $15.98, you add $7 onto whatever this averages, this, this is the data you're giving us. If you add $7 on it, you're up to $22 ish, still on the lower spectrum, and that immediately covers your IDD. Now the next is the infrastructure moving forward. So again, from the residential to the commercial, all of it, all the categories, I would like to go back to the data that we have that's proven, which is our 10-year study that we had prior to doing this. And then looking at those numbers based on percentages across the board to get us where we need to be. And I don't think it's unreasonable to be, move ourselves up from the last water rate comparison, you know, up a few brackets, just to cover that $5 million in the property tax money that we received back. So again, I keep saying commercial, let's take it back to what it was. Do everything the way we did. Nobody's really shocked. All the way to the HOAs that had a really good relationship with the previous council, working this through. That's all I have to say again.
Yeah. Councilmember Lynn?
Mr. Mayor, I, I am hearing what Councilmember Campbell saying. What, what would that look like if we went back to where we were before this? What does that look like? Like where are we going to be hurting? Can, can you explain that?
Mayor, Councilmember Lynn, the system is broken. We would be, we're broken, both funds in, I believe it's year three. And, and in addition to that, when you look at the five-year plan, we're not programming any projects in, in years three, four, and five, particularly in, in, on the, on the water side. Because we don't have, we can't come to council and ask you to approve a CIP that, that, that's in the red, that we don't have funds to pay for those projects. So if you take a look at our existing CIP, you'll see, you won't see any projects on the water, right? More so that we're looking at in, in future years. We pretty much program projects for year one for next year. We have, we have a one-year CIP. And if you look at the projections that we've been sharing with the council at the retreats the last several years, every time there's a financial update that the budget process identifies the water and the sewer fund, we are in the red in, in, right now in, in year three.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Knutson. Yeah. When Ms. Olson went over the report with us, even the most recent monthly report we had, it, our quarterly report, it indicates that we have to do something. So. All right. Any other thoughts on commercial to give the staffs? We want, we want to, we want to take a look at it, but we, it seems like we have a, a thought that we can, can review them to what they were in the past to help offset other rate areas.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah. Yeah, I do believe with the commercial, I mean, I was one of the commercials that went up and, and some of them went down. And I don't think we should have had any of them gone down. I think everyone needs to pay their fair share. So I think some of those we need to look at to put in line with all the other businesses that are, are contributing. So.
All right. Does that give you enough feedback, Mr. Knutson? Okay. Is there anything else that, Mr. Knutson, you and your team need or Mr. Burnett need from us this evening?
We'll be back with some options, some ideas, and then how that, what that looks like in like from a bill format. So, and, and then Kevin and Pat have done a really good job in the past. They'll present like a small family, maybe of two, what, what's large family look like and some of the differences in some of those rates as well too. So, thank you.
All right. So we have had a robust conversation here. This is a public hearing though, and so we are going to open up to, to the public. But you don't have to sign up for our public hearings, but we did have one citizen do so. So Mr. Mark McNabb, if you'd like to, yeah, please make your way to the podium and if you want to share your thoughts with us?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. We appreciate you listening to us. I was here back the last time we were having this conversation. I was at a meeting with Councilmember Campbell, had a couple of communications with her and also had a couple of communications with Mayor Cal. We do appreciate Councilman Moses, Councilwoman Koch, and Ms. Campbell talking on behalf of the HOAs. I think one of the biggest, I represent Sherlock Homes. I'm the treasurer. We're, our address is 1700 Swanson Avenue in Lake Havasu City. We have 59 member units in our condo association. We have six units that are filled on a yearly basis. We have approximately 53 units that are not filled at least a minimum of six months out of the year. Obviously, we went through some sort of a very heavy-hearted look at your last rate study. And we were trying to figure out how we could stay afloat. I know there was other HOAs throughout Lake Havasu that have a similar type situation to us. I know when we were listening to the presentation here today, I was thinking about that, like, okay, if our condo association members were living here year round, it would probably make a significant difference as to the amount of water and sewer that we're using. But typically, we are not here for at least six months out of the year. The other thing that came up in my mind was the period of July. There's almost nobody here in our association. And I can only speak for our association, but I do think there's other associations that have a similar type thing going on where they don't have a lot of people that live here throughout the summer. Most of our folks come back during October, November. Some of them stay through until March or April, but then they're all headed back to the north. They're snowbirds. And so that's going to be similar for my wife and myself this year too. I do think that it makes a difference to your HOAs if we can have some sort of a conversation. I know you've been speaking to it now and I'm encouraged by it. But what if we are not here in present? Is there any way that we could have a communication that was either via the internet or through emails and correspondence, but to let us have a voice? Because right now, we are relying on you folks as being our voice. And you're the only ones that we have. Because we don't usually vote in your elections. We are not here to come up and speak during the month of July, August, September. We're just not around. And so we're not going to have that voice. And I know it was really a good thing for our associations to have you guys take another look at this. I was here and I spoke at the previous meeting. I think there was people all the way outside the door that, you know, we were looking at it and there was a number of us that were jumping up and down. And I know some of the bigger associations around here were saying, hey, this is going to bankrupt us. We're, we're not going to be able to stay in business. So we're glad that you did take a step back and that you're looking at this. And we really respect that. But I think you've got to really take a good, hard look at what you're doing with the rate structures. I don't want to speak against anybody. Obviously, I own a single family home back north and I have to pay my rates too. But I think for the multifamily situation, and that's the one that I want to speak on behalf of, is that we do want to have a voice in this. And we do want to share our thoughts with you as you move forward. And I really would appreciate it if maybe you could come up with some sort of avenue that some of us could speak on behalf of the association. So you could get our input, even if we're not in town. Thank you very much. I appreciate you listening.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. And thank you for bringing that suggestion. We certainly can have an electronic means, one of our public outreach discussions, Mr. Knutson, through that process. And we want to engage with HOAs so we can get the, the feedback and understand we're all on the same, the same page. It's a nonprofit system that has to be paid for by those ratepayers and all the ratepayers' voices need to be heard. So thank you for your comments. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item? Please just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Nice to be tall. My name is Frankie Lyons. 17-year resident here, going on 18. I'm not understanding, like you want people who don't use the water, you're going to penalize them for you not using water when they're here? That, that didn't make sense to me at all. And I'm wondering where the water bill for the city comes in. Are you on the same rate that we are? And who covers that through what funding? And then also, I'm, I'm not understanding why this council turned down $8 million from the county that was offered us for water infrastructure. We're trying to make nickels and dimes and you turn away $8 million. That to me is not representing the people.
Yeah. Thank you for your comments. I have no idea what you're talking about with $8 million being turned down.
Yes, you do, Cal.
I know.
Without a doubt.
Miss Lyons. So that, some of the conversation that was here today, I didn't hear any members of, of the council mention paying. It was an option that was, was presented, but we're just at the very start, early stages of this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
If the county is listening, we will take the $8 million. I will even drive to Kingman and pick it up for you.
You know, Councilmember Dolan, you could probably just fly to Kingman. Yes, completely. Had a question about the capital improvement per, um, plan that was on there. One, you have on here the flow equalization basin, things that are listed on here. And I thought those were paid for last year or the year before. And then you ask about a, you, there's a list on here for laboratory building on the island. And I thought you guys were planning to put a laboratory building in the environmental learning center that you were planning to put on the Havasu Riviera area. And so I was just curious where that stuff comes into play with this water stuff. Also, the, you know, the water bill, my water bill is not, didn't come out to $71 a month. And I live in a single family home with just a couple of people. I don't understand how that total came up. My water is a lot less than that.
Yeah. So there's, on our water bills, we have water, sewer, and then also your trash is, is included in, in your water bills that you receive at home?
Yes. The, when I did my math on my bill, my base charge comes out to 6116, not 70 something.
Good to be combined.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Yeah. It's, I, I'm not sure what you're, you're looking at right now.
The water rate comparison, the totals on the, in the study showed on page nine.
It's on, yeah, we have it on the screen now, Ms. Tor.
Oh, thanks. It says it's 7164. When I did the math for my bill at home, I came out to 6116. So that's a huge difference that I didn't understand why it was so different.
Yes. This is the average of all ratepayers on the residential side.
On the resident?
Jim's is much more.
I, I live on a resident.
Yeah. So you're, you're one, you're one home and then you take other homes and you add them together and divide by the number. That will give you the average. That's what this number is here.
Okay. I thought it was, you're not doing a flat rate thing?
This is a rate comparison of the average rates that are paid by residential customers in Lake Havasu City.
Okay.
Yeah. And then when it comes to the programming for the capital improvement, some of them are placeholders. As Mr. Frosley explained when he reviewed the capital improvement. So when it comes to labs and those things, they're placeholders where we need the money and we know we need a lab. Location and vetting of, of the projects will come at a later date. And you'll, you'll find that later into the program of this particular 10-year plan.
So we don't know if you're going to put the laboratory out on the island or in the Havasu Riviera?
We don't, no.
Can you put it all the way back over by a cherry tree somewhere?
Well, that, possibly. A lot of the, the. A lot of, the sky's the limit, but we at least need to program the money while we're doing the rate structure.
Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Peggy Pollak, and I live in a house in Lake Havasu City. And since we started talking about increasing once again, my rates on the last increase went up from $64 to $81. Now, I figured it out, and I have the water bills. My water bill is $10 a month, but my sewer bill is $54 a month. And I'm thinking, now, why would I pay that much when people that live in condos are paying $18 a month for sewer? I'm only one person. I went to the water department, and I got all the information. I, for the last two years, I've either used 100 cubic feet a month of water or 110 cubic feet of water. I counted and averaged how many times I used the bathroom to figure out. I know sewers got more than just a bathroom, but I wanted to see. So on my numbers, I use the bathroom about 360 times a month. It turns out to 14 times a flush. However, if I was living in an apartment and used 360 flushes, I would only be paying eight cents a month, a flush. And if I was living in a condo, I would only be paying five cents a flush. So I'm paying $84 for water and sewer. I use 110 cubic feet a month and flush the toilet 360 times. Now, I think at $84 a month, I'm paying way more than my fair share. And I don't mind paying a fair share, but I'm telling you, I cannot afford it anymore for what I get. And it shouldn't be disparaged between whether you live in an apartment or a condo. If you use the water, if you use it, if you use the sewer, you've got to pay for it. I shouldn't be penalized because I live in a house. And I would also like to thank all of you for doing all your hard work, because you guys do a really good job for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peggy.
Mayor, can I ask for one question?
Sure. Ms. Pollak, Councilmember Campbell has a question for you. If you could just make your way to the microphone, please.
Did you tell me what was your water and sewer rate prior to our last rate increase?
I think it was 62. It was in the 60s and it went up to 84.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item?
Don Wisdom. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I don't know if this is appropriate, but it has something to do with the water. Do we have any percolating ponds in Havasu? Okay, I didn't know that.
Oh, yes.
Maybe people don't know what a percolating pond is. Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Wisdom. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item? All right, seeing that, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for any final comments. All right, well, thank you, Mr. Burnett, thank you, Ms. Walker, and we look forward to seeing you guys in the future.
Thank you.
Mr. Kozowski, do you have anything else, or?
No, that's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
All right, the next item on our agenda is item 7.2, is Adopt Ordinance Number 23-1307, amending City Code Chapter 2.04, Sections 2.04.080 and 2.04.280, to revise regular meeting times and how council members request items for further research or be placed on agenda. Ms. Gary.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. At the last city council meeting, an ordinance was introduced to change the city council meeting regular times to 5:30 PM. So tonight before you is an ordinance to make that adoption final. These, there were two items that were requested by council to be discussed. The meeting time was one, as well as city council requests. At the conclusion of last, the last council meeting discussion, no direction was given to proceed with any revisions to the city code related to council requests. So the ordinance before you is only to amend the regular city meeting council time to 5:30. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Gary. Are there any questions of members of the council from Ms. Gary on this item? Any comments from members of the council? Vice Mayor Lane?
Thank you. I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I have some comments. First, what I want to say is, during our last meeting, I made some comments, and I think I might have hurt some people's feelings, and I did not mean to do that. We just have some strong feelings, and we don't always agree. And that's a good thing, that we don't always agree. We should disagree on some certain things. But I want to address the way items are put on the agenda. So there was a lot of discussions. We couldn't come to a consensus. And I went home, and I thought about this, and I thought, you know, I may have been a little strong in some of the things that I said. As I said, I may have hurt some feelings, and I did not mean to do that. But one of the things that I thought about was, during our retreat, we had somebody ask us the question, do you want to be right, or do you want to be productive? And I think we all pretty much agreed, we want to be productive and not necessarily be right. So I kind of looked at everything that everybody had to say. I looked at some of the other cities and how they do things. So one of the, one of the items and one of the discussions we had was whether or not we should even have this on the agenda. And I think it was pretty adamant that this needed to stay on the agenda when people had, they wanted to put an item on the agenda for future discussion. So I definitely think that needs to stay on there. I think it pretty much should stay exactly the way it is, but only with one change. And actually, Councilmember Dolan brought this up. And he said, on item number one, it'd be Section 2.04.280A1, making a motion and receiving a second, no vote necessary, during the future discussion items. I think that should all stay, but I think it should go to receiving a second from two council members, which is what, Councilmember Dolan. I think it's a compromise where we're not always going to agree on everything, but it is a compromise with what everybody had to say that night. Looking at some of the other cities, such as Bullhead City, Prescott, Mariana, those cities require two council members to second that request. So I'd like to have the discussion, and I've written a motion when it comes to that point on doing that, but I'd like to have the discussion on that, and I believe that's the way we should move forward. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Vice, Vice Mayor Lane. Are there other comments for members of the council?
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
We had huge community outreach on this, on just making it easier. We're all adults here, Councilmember, excuse me, Vice Mayor Lane, you even said the same. What we're trying to do here is make it blocking some people to put items on the agenda. And saying that you have to get a third is, no, there are some places that all you have to do is one person motions, and it's done. Or better yet, we talked about just sending a letter to the city clerk. But you may personally believe that this is the right direction, but I think there was a lot of community feedback back then. They, yes, last time, I think they trusted us to do what they were asking us to do. Now it's here. We all moved forward with direction. And now we're trying to turn it upside down again. What does it matter if it's one or two people? If a council member wants to put something on the agenda, they should. And the other problem is, you might get into situations with open meeting laws. If I speak to two people, I can't speak to somebody else to get it done on the board. I just think this is, I think some people's feelings were hurt, and I think there'll be a lot of people's feelings hurt because there was a lot of community outreach on that. And I think you may be wanting to listen to yourself, but you're really, truly not going to be listening to the citizens of Lake Havasu City if you want to overturn this again.
Vice Mayor Lane?
Yeah, if I could just address those issues. One, this has nothing to do with citizens putting things on to the agenda. Citizens, still, there's an option where they can do that, and this is only one of the ways that city council members can put items on the agenda. There's other ways that council members can get it put on. This is just on the call to the, during our agenda speaking. We shouldn't be talking to other council members before the agenda. It's one of those things that you bring it up because you may want to have that discussion, which I think is great. And if it's appropriate, then you're going to have two other council members that will say, yes, you should. If you don't, you still have other avenues to get things put on the agenda. So I, this has nothing to do, as I said, with the citizens putting things on. This is just how the seven of us put things on. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor Lane. Are there any, Councilmember Lynn?
I don't even have words. We're here today, and we've talked about this before on other issues. We've made a decision. We go forward that. Going back and readdressing this right now, when we have right on here what the suggestion motion is, is to only discuss the time, is just completely inappropriate. It is completely inappropriate. And again, I'm going to take it very personal. Again, apology, no apology. We made a decision as a council just a few weeks ago that this was the direction we're going to go, and returning this conversation is just completely unqualified.
Mayor, and it's not even on the agenda. I mean, the item of text says amending this code, and we're talking about time. Excuse me.
Yes, so it is on the title. So the title on the agenda is written as adopting ordinance amending City Code Chapter 2.04, Sections 2.04.80 and 2.04.280, which is to revise the meeting times and how council members can request items for further research. The way code is written is you have an introduction. That was the introduction at that time, as Ms. Gary reported. We had consensus on the time of the meeting. At that point, we gave no direction moving forward on how you place things on the agenda. But it still is a title that you, this is the final adoption. So I mean, that's just how, that's how the code is written, and that's how it works. We'll have an introduction, and we have a final adoption at all, for all ordinances that we have. Vice Mayor Lane?
You said what I was going to say. We didn't have an agreement. We couldn't come to an agreement. So this came on because another council member requested it to come forward. So now it's come forward. We didn't have an agreement. I am suggesting a compromise for everybody to consider. Is, all I'm doing is trying to come up with a compromise. Because we couldn't come to an agreement, I'm trying to come up with a compromise so that everybody feels comfortable with the way we're doing things moving forward. We didn't like the way things were done with the previous administration, so we changed it. We waited a couple of years. It wasn't working. We changed it again. We've waited a couple of years. It's still not working 100%. So I'm just putting forward a compromise to see if this would work. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor Lane.
Mr. Mayor, I have one other question.
Yeah, Councilmember Lynn?
What's not working? What is not working? I don't understand what is not working. This, I have been on this council for nine years. If you want to put something on the agenda, you were able to put something on the agenda. What I see, what is being done, is things being blocked from being put on the agenda. There, I do not understand where we did not come to a compromise on this when we talked about it. I don't know what wasn't working, Vice Mayor Lane, what was not working. I want an explanation.
As I said before, our items are coming forward that are, in my opinion, are not appropriate. If you, let me finish. If you get, if you get two other council members that think that it's important, then it would go on to the agenda. And this is only one of the ways. And if you're still not happy in the council meeting, the way it goes forward, you still have other options to get items put on the agenda. I just think that the way we're doing it now, when you have one person that wants to put it on there, and you only get one of the other seven members to agree with you, it has to go on the agenda. And I don't think that's always appropriate, that it has to go on the agenda when it's not necessarily appropriate for our council to be discussing that particular item. And if it is appropriate, you're going to get at least two other members to say so. And if it's, if you're still not happy, there's still other processes available to get that done. As I said, this is a compromise that I'm trying to come up with. And I'm sorry if it's upset you with what I'm trying to come forward with. I'm just, it's on the agenda. The time to talk about it is now. We couldn't come to a consensus last time. Even though it was put on the agenda by another council member, we couldn't come to a consensus. So I thought about it, and I thought, what can we do? How can we compromise to make this a better process where everybody's happy with it? Apparently, it's not a good compromise, but I'm ready to listen to what you all have to say.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Dolan?
We're forgetting the big picture. We are represented by the community. We are elected by the community to represent them. Not one of us has the power to do anything. We are a council. So a majority of us can decide to raise the rates. A majority of us can decide to repave the parking lot. It's not, I can't decide that we're going to repay McCullough, and, well, the people want me to do this, the people want me to do this, my voters want me to do this. Well, unless the other six people that were also elected by my constituents agree with me, we don't get anything done. And to be honest, we haven't had that. We have had an issue where we have one specific council member that would keep coming up with ideas, and then another council member would rubber stamp them. And then we would be directing staff to hire attorneys. We would be directing staff to have special meetings that then, we didn't have, we didn't have consensus from anybody else. We'd have a meeting about water and pools being drained because two council members want it. And then we'd have the presentation, and then it would come to the council. And for consensus, what does the council as a whole want to do? And the council as a whole doesn't want to do anything. So if, if we're going to keep doing this, that we want two people to put something on the agenda, well, then, okay, then that's fine. But then I think that the system we have now, that we've started with, when Jenny wanted to put this on the agenda, we went around the room, Jenny, what would you like to present? She presented it. We went council by council member, and we had a consensus. Yeah, we'd like to continue. Then we, as a council, direct staff as a council with a majority. But I, we're not doing that right now. So that's where I think the system is broken. That's why I like the idea of, if you can't come in front of council and convince five other people up here that, hey, I think we need to look at repaving McCullough, or we need to look at potholes, or we need, if you can't get five other people, you're going to need two other people to, if you already have two, you're going to need two other people to even make the change anyway. So we're kind of, at that point, unfortunately, showboating when we want to bring the patriots group. And we want to ignore all laws unless they're based on the Constitution, and one council member wants to do it, when there's seven, six of us that don't want to do it. Or, and those are the things we've had. So we, it's not about us. It's not about our constituents. It's not about, I can get up here and say what I want, and, but I'm one person. I can't do anything without three other people. We are a council, and I think that's my concern, is what's broken. So if we want to keep it two people, great, then let's, let's keep what we're doing now. Then before we direct staff to do anything, it goes on the next agenda, next agenda. Okay, David, you wanted to talk to us about, whatever you want to talk about, go. And then you present what you'd like to have at the agenda item B. We go around the room. We get consensus. If we don't get consensus, it goes away. That way, everybody has a voice, but everything's done in a public meeting. So I'd be, I like that idea because I think we're going in that direction. I do like the three-person idea, and I would vote for it if it came up because I think it's, you need four people to do anything anyway. So I don't think we're stifling anybody's vote. I mean, if anybody wants to present something that's, has to do with the city, I think we, it's going to happen in a meeting, and if I vote no, then I have to answer everybody else as well. So I just, let's talk about what's really happening. It's two people or one specific that wants to keep putting agenda items on that the rest of the council doesn't think is appropriate, but their friend keeps rubber stamping it, and I think it's kind of ridiculous. So that's my thoughts.
Yeah, thank you. Are there any other comments? Councilmember Koch?
I just wanted to go back to the real reason why this was brought, why I brought it up at the council retreat. Unfortunately, it got portrayed way outside of the character, and it's gotten way bigger than what I anticipated. We were told to bring ideas, things that we could talk about, discuss, to the retreat. And the early, earlier time of the meetings was one of them, but under the same section was items being placed on the agenda. And we have had the situation in the early, last couple of, the last year, where items got brought to us that weren't necessarily within our jurisdiction, giving our general public the idea that we had something that we could do about it. So I just brought up the idea that maybe we should talk about that so that there aren't any misconceptions out there. It got out completely twisted to members of the public because I got a lot of emails saying I talked to this person or that person, and they're saying that you want to take away people's ability to put things on the agenda. It's never my intent. My intent was to have the discussion so that we didn't have items come to us that were not within our jurisdiction, that we didn't give the misconception that it was something we could do about it. That was plain and simple. There was no malice. I honestly, that's just not me, and if you think so, then you don't know me very well. That's all I wanted, was to have the discussion. So we had the discussion, and we walked out with, you know, no consensus on that, which I had no hard feelings, but we had a discussion. You know, it's being brought back now, and interesting that there was thoughts... it's being brought back now. And interesting that there was thought, processes after. I don't have a problem with having three people. If I want an item on the agenda, I'm pretty much sure that if I bring it up and I don't get at least two people, there's no way I'm going to get it passed at a meeting anyway, because you won't have a consensus. And I, I just feel like that's the way. But I, I'll go along with however anybody wants to move forward. But I just think that this, like, people against each other was never the intent of my idea. My idea was completely just, think of something, and I thought of something, and obviously it was a complete wrong thing to talk about. We shouldn't talk about these things. So sorry for bringing just a big tumbleweed effect, but that was honestly where I was coming from. And I think it's got a little crazy, so.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments before we open the public hearing?
I'm here.
Councilmember Campbell?
Boy, I wish I would have known this when I was totally on Councilmember Coke's side, when she said we just need to make it easier, just a letter in, one person doesn't, she didn't like the optics of it in front of people. Now the optics are really going to show itself. So you guys are going to see the divide, and it's not going to help. And obviously, the council member, they're directing it to myself and to Councilwoman Lynn, because nobody else has brought anything to the table. But I will also have to say that as a new member, there was a lot of times that, again, you get your agenda on a Thursday, and come Tuesday, you're running around trying to figure everything out that you need to know. And now I don't even, I won't even have the right to do, hey, found out on Thursday that I have all this to do. And now on Tuesday, at the end of the meeting, if I want to do a new item or a motion to discuss, so that I can make a better decision on a future potential item that might come up and open to the public, I won't have the right to do that. Because as you can tell up here, the dynamics already, I don't believe there, there'll probably be some major pushback. I'm very disappointed in this. I don't think it's a big deal. We were all elected by the community. Again, we, Councilmember Coke had made the comment, having these discussions is good. So yeah, there's, there's been a lot of things that have changed in my life. In other words, I was meeting with the city manager the day after a city council meeting for the first year. I didn't know anything that was going on the agenda. So as a new member, I've learned a lot, and I wish you guys could just trust me moving forward. Through all this has been pretty controversial, without a doubt. But now you're just shutting myself down as a new council member that needs discussions to make great laws and legislation. And my constituents come and ask me questions, and I, I try to give them the right answer in an open forum. But I guess we'll take it back and talk to two people behind closed doors and see if we can come out and talk to this stuff in front of you. But I'm really disappointed. I really thought that Councilmember Coke, that's why I approved it at the retreat, was she was trying to make it easier for us. And I was the one that tried to get the water rate studies blocked and retro back to July 1. And they said, no. So I'm the one that felt it. None of you felt it. I felt it. And then we went on to have the most epic water rate study that cost the citizens four to five million dollars by just pulling money out of the sky. So you talk about what I've done wrong the first year or two on council. There's been a lot of things that haven't been perfect up here. There's been a lot of things that could have been shut down and done better. A lot. But if you want to target Councilwomen Lynn and I and say that we're the ones that are doing everything wrong, then go ahead and go with your three vote and whichever. It's really, really disappointing that we don't have the respect that we probably deserve.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. I haven't heard from any of the conversation that, that we've had here this evening that, that it's, that people aren't being trustful or, or different information. I mean, obviously, there, there are some comments that, that were made, but where, this is not uncommon to have, to have three people. And there's also multiple ways to get things on the agenda. You can get things on the agenda as a citizen. You can get things on the agenda by working through my office. You get things on the agenda by, by the future discussion items. There's lots of ways to get things on the agenda. And, and many cities are doing this. The, I believe, like, Cabus City used to do it this way as well. But it's, it's about efficiency and how do we best serve, serve our citizens and, and the respect that that's going to be. So last council meeting, when the introduction was here, I believe it was Councilmember Dolan that had mentioned to have three, three people. And it was Councilmember Lynn that mentioned that you wanted to keep it as an agenda item on there. And what I heard Vice Mayor Lynn say is mold the two together. I'm not trying to put words in anyone's mouth. I'm just trying to bring reference back to, to where, where we're at and why this just is coming up this evening. But let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Let's hear what the public has to say, and then we'll come back and, and have further discussion as a council. So this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Please just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Frankie Lyons. I've been at this city council many times, watched it on TV many times. There's not, five members up there who will not, at any time, support what Nancy does or Michelle does, because they have an issue. And I hear a lot of stuff. I don't say a lot of stuff, but coercion, misrepresentation is in this city council right now. You guys need to start following your code of conduct, which all of you are not following. I have FOIAs on that. I've got a ton of FOIAs on all of you guys, because you have misrepresented to this city what you're doing up there. These women have integrity, and you're not, at any time, accepting their point of view. They bring stuff to the city council because their people in the city, their constituents, want to know. And again, there's nobody up here except for Michelle Lynn, who has ever talked to me about issues. Not one of you have the nerve to talk to me.
Yeah, would anyone else like to address the council on this item?
Point of clarification?
Yeah, Councilmember Moses?
I've supported plenty of things with Nancy. I've supported plenty of things with Michelle.
Hi, it's Bonnie. I'm really confused about the whole, why that second part of the ordinance was even on there, because at the last meeting, you guys did take, take that off.
1307, 1307, just for the record.
You corrected him, and you took off the, the mo, the motion to not request items, because there was no need for it to be on there. And the only thing that was motioned on there was for the time to be, the meeting time was on there, to be set to 5:30. And so I know when I saw the agenda, I was like, why is, why does it say how council members request time items on there, or request items, because you guys had made that decision during the meeting, that it was to not be on there. And you even had her, you had to correct her on the number of the motion, because it was being changed. And so I don't even understand how it got presented this way. I was just really, I thought it was really odd. And I, as a citizen, would like to say that I don't understand all the time how things get put on the agenda. When you are sitting here and saying that you need a second person besides the person who motions for the agenda, and you're saying that there has to be a major five to one, or five to two. The deal is, the mayor, in my opinion, should not be one of the people voting on it, because I thought that the mayor was the one who was supposed to set up the whole agenda. So it should only be between the other six members of the council. And that part, I did not understand at all. Why does there have to be five people, or whatever number of people? I'm too nervous to remember it all right now, even though I just said it. But yes, that one, the mayor shouldn't have to be, you should, you put too much work on yourself. Do you realize that? I mean, come on. You expect everybody to go through you to do everything. It just seems kind of weird that you have to put all that work and burden on you. There's a lot of stuff you already do anyway. To have to worry about whether or not council members are putting things on the agenda, you know, that's, I don't understand that. Also, I really appreciate every single council member who sits and listens to the citizens and then says, hey, let's talk about this. And from, was it 2020 discussions, I noticed that when a council member asked for something to be put on the agenda, such as price gouging at gas stations, that even when the gas station owner on the council agreed to, to be on the agenda, it still never made one agenda, even though it was seconded by someone during one of the further research or council member requests. So just because somebody requested doesn't necessarily mean, even if somebody else agrees to it, that it's still going to get onto the agenda later on. So I don't understand why you need three people or five people. And I don't understand why just one member can't request it.
Does that conclude your comments?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so those are, those are comments of yours, so.
And questions, I guess.
Yeah, to address the title, issue, the title of the agenda is, currently is introduced. We introduced the, the item at the last meeting, a subsequent meeting, which is the conversation that is occurring right now, that is, is introduced there. The direction that we gave at the last council meeting was presented by Ms. Gary to change the time. But this code section is still the same code section that, that we're addressing. And that's why Vice Mayor Lynn was able to, to bring this up. Now, as far as, as me putting things on the agenda, I have, as do my colleagues on council, duty to uphold the Constitution of the United States, the state of Arizona, and the City Code. The City Code is, is how this dictates. So there's multiple ways to get things on the agenda. One is to work through my office. One is to do something as, as a future discussion item that's on the agenda. That's the, the component we're talking about right now. Or there's an avenue for citizens to get things on the agenda as well. So those are, are the three avenues in which they can get things on the agenda. That's, that's codified in the code. So I'm not putting extra work on me. I'm following the code.
How does a citizen get something put on the agenda?
It's, it's outlined in the City Code on how to do that.
Okay. Where would I find that information?
Our City Code is on the website. So you can go on the website and see, see our full City Code by code section. There's, there's references as well.
You don't have it printed out somewhere, so I could just?
Yeah, there is, yeah, there are printed out copies as well.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And then?
Yeah, Ms. Toy, if you could, wrap up your comments. Your five minutes is up.
No, I was just, at the last meeting, it, you did end it with just revising the meeting times and dropped the other part. The other part was completely dropped in your voting process. And it was a vote seven to zero to just change the meeting times.
On the introduction, now today's the final adoption.
So we introduce an ordinance, the one we, every, everything ordinance we have to change, we have to have two public meetings. So we introduce an ordinance at one meeting and have discussion. And then we make recommendations to staff for adjustments if we need it. And then at the second meeting, we adopt the ordinance, but we also, so nothing we do is official until we officially change the ordinance. So yes, we're still talking about the same item off of last time, but we, this is the final, adopting the ordinance, so we can make changes up to it right until we vote on it, so.
Oh, like that whole tax thing last year. Got it.
In our Board of Directors meeting we had yesterday, if somebody wanted to make a motion, we made a motion. Somebody seconded, then it was discussed and voted on. You'll need one extra person.
Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item? All right, seeing now we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for any additional discussion or possible.
Mr. Mayor? I'd like to clear up a few things. So details are important. Councilmember Campbell said some things, that her rate study was brought up to be even as an agenda item, and it never made it to council. As I'm, I'm the council member that seconded that. She wanted it on the very next board, the next council meeting. And there's nothing in the books that says if you get something on a future agenda item, that it's going to be at the exact next council meeting. It's a future agenda item. It was a future agenda item. So we had to wait till the next, the following meeting after that, because the consultant couldn't be here for that meeting. So that's why it didn't make it on that meeting. So that's kind of showboating around that. That's not really what happened.
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan, just tread lightly, please. We're, we're really talking about how to get things on the, on.
Yeah, but some, some points were made, and I think they should be clarified, because there was a community outreach of things getting on the agenda. There wasn't a community outreach. There were a few people that you guys had encouraged to come to the meeting and write letters, and they're the ones that said stuff. All the people that I talked to and spoke to, nobody said anything. People read the newspaper, and they asked me about it, and I explained it to them. They're like, oh, that sounds about right. Like I said, I'm okay with keeping it at the two. But I think you, you should, the problem is, we need to be careful that a non-majority of the council is directing staff to do things. We, as the one council member, do not have the authority to direct staff, to hire attorneys, to put agenda items together to do anything. So I think we, great, if, if, if one person wants to bring something, then it'll be at the next meeting. They have to sell it to the council. And if it's nothing the council wants, as a consensus, we don't move it on. Then everybody has their voice. At a public meeting, there's no problems. So if somebody wants to say, hey, let's have the Patriot Group, let's get rid of all laws unless I find them constitutional. And somebody can, can bring that up. And if nobody else wants to do it, great. But, but, but at least you get to bring it up at a meeting, and you get to be heard, which is what happened. So, great. Like I said, have it at a public meeting, and then it's good. So I just wanted to clarify some of those points, because they weren't factual.
Mayor?
Councilmember Campbell? Yeah, and please, please tread lightly as well. This is, yeah.
My code of conduct will be okay.
Thank you.
All right. Factual. Everybody has two sides to every story, right? My side is the one that I actually spoke to. First off, he did second it. I said, I wanted, I motioned to stop the water rate study effectively immediately.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we're.
And retro it back. Go look at the meetings.
Yeah, we can't, we can't rehearse. We're not talking about those at all.
That's what I asked for. I didn't ask for a consultant to come back, and I did not ask for, and we have been talking about water rate studies, so it's on the agenda. I did not tax.
It's not on the agenda for this item. So, so please, we're not, we're not in court of law. We're not trying to take who, whose side's right or wrong.
I know.
We're trying to address how to get things on the item.
I know. But I was the one that actually got blocked from that, is the way I felt. And I was told the buck stops here. End of issue. That's what I was told.
Thank you. Councilmember Lynn, did you have comments?
Mr. Mayor, just a couple of weeks ago, we gave out a million dollars to nonprofits to help our most needy in this town. I came to the mayor originally with this over a year ago, and wanted to use the ARPA money, and I was told to wait. So it felt maybe to some of the council members that I grandstand it, or whatever term you want to use, when I asked for it to be an agenda item. And I did get a second. We also, as we went forward, we had two council members that voted no on that. It would have been very impossible at that time if I had a mayor that wasn't supporting me at the time. At that time, I wasn't saying that you wouldn't have in the future. And I had two other council members that already were saying no. So that was trying to convince three council members to even get this on the agenda, which I'm going to think at that time, there was already some turbulence with our council, that that wasn't going to happen. Now, because it didn't go down that way, and we got the second, we ended up, as a consensus, we gave a million dollars back to the community. Not only that, now a task force is being formed. So if you're asking for that third thing, you don't know what you're blocking, because that doesn't get this enough conversation. Yes, you get a first, you get a second. You may not get a third, because it's something that just came to us that day, and we didn't get enough chance to filter it. So I, I just don't understand this. We are all following the rules. We've gone through a retreat. We've talked about this. We can go on as adults. We're following the rules right now. I, I, I'm not quite sure why we're having to go back and talk about this.
Yeah. Councilmember Moses?
I just want to point out that Ms. Toy brought up the perfect reason why this is being brought up. Because a council member asked to talk about what we can do to stop these gas stations from price gouging, right? And then it never came. And now there's a council member on, on here that has a gas station, and the perception is that he blocked it. Instead of, instead of just having a, a third person, you, you kind of went along with it. And there wasn't a third person that agreed with that. Okay? And now, and so I, I knew there was nothing the city could do. That's not in the purview of what a city does. But because there's this rubber stamp thing going on, now, now there's a perception that, that Jim blocked that from happening, so that he could price gouge. could price gouge. That's ridiculous, and there's some things that are ridiculous, and when I talk to the certain council member that says she wants to put stuff on, and I ask her, did you really believe in that? Did you really think that that's the way that we should go? And she says, no. No, I, I didn't believe in that. Why? Then why are we talking about it? And that's why there's a perception of grandstanding, of just playing to, to try and get the applause from the crowd, instead of doing what's best for the city. So understand where they're coming from, don't be so upset. There's real consequences to what you propose up here.
Are there any additional comments?
Mayor.
Councilmember Campbell?
Since that was targeted to me, that comment.
Again, we're not in court, so please tread lightly.
I know, we're talking about putting an item on the, yeah, item on the agenda, and my very first time, when it was all about the constitutional sanctuary city, I didn't understand it.
Yeah.
So I asked.
We can't, we can't hash these things.
You weren't brought up, you weren't targeted.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Vice Mayor Lane?
We're, we're getting way off of the.
Yes.
What this is about, so I'd like to call for a question.
Please, if you have a motion.
I will make a motion.
Okay.
I move to adopt ordinance number 23-1307, amending city code section 2.04.8080, amending the regular city council meeting time to 5:30 PM, and I would like to amend section 2.04.280, section A, number one, making a motion and receiving a second from two other council members. No vote necessary during the future discussion items portion of the city council meeting.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Mayor.
Councilmember, I don't think the committee discussion until we have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, additional discussion. Uh, Councilmember Coke?
I just wanted to clarify that it, this is, I'm the one that brought this up, so I'm going to give it a second, and we'll see if it passes or it fails.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments? All right.
Can we, Mayor, can I at least go back to what I thought was going to happen? If we just wrote a letter to staff, it would be a done deal?
Uh, we have to, we have to fill this motion through first, and if this fails, we can entertain an additional motion. All right, we're ready to vote?
Motion carries four to three.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item 7.3, is approve professional services agreement with Kim Lee Horn for the design of the Queens Bay Wash Crossing improvements. Mr. Teal.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, good to see you again. All right, so the item we have before us this evening is improvements to the Queens Bay Wash Crossing CIP project. So the project location is located just off Swanson Avenue, right off Highway 95, at the end of Queens Bay. So you can see here in the photo, the existing condition is, it's a super low water crossing. During heavy rains, this area fills up with water and makes it unsafe to travel. So like I just said, flooding during the rainstorms and the amount of traffic that utilizes this crossing, improvements have been recommended. The improvements will ensure access for first responders to the area during storms. Kim Lee Horn is going to provide an initial drainage analysis of the area, to look at the hydrology, hydrology of drainage in the area, and provide recommendations for improvements. We ask Kim Lee Horn for a scope work, and it includes the following tasks. We'll hold a project kickoff meeting and plan review meetings. They're going to obtain topographic information in order to set the new profile for the potential culvert and roadway, provide existing and proposed hydraulic conditions analysis to determine the future culvert size, prepare the drainage report to document the hydraulic analysis, and then prepare final construction documents, engineer's estimate, and bid phase services as well. So we're recommending approving a professional services agreement with Kim Lee Horn for the design of the Queen, Queens Bay Wash Crossing in the amount of $61,055.
Thank you. Do any members have any questions? Excellent, do any members of the council have any questions for Mr. Teal on this item?
Mayor.
Councilmember Moses?
I just want clarification, that is a public street.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep. Any other questions for Mr. Teal? All right, this is a public hearing, would anyone like to address the city council on Seeing now, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Coke?
Motion.
Please.
I move to approve professional services agreement with Kim Lee Horn for the design of the Queens Bay Wash Crossing Improvement Project in the amount of $61,055.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Coke, and we have a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? All right, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 7.4 is approve the task order number four to the master services agreement to CNS Companies for the Design and Construction Management Services Airport Automated Weather Observation System, AWAS project. Mr. Teal.
Yes, so who knows what AWAS is?
Airport Automated Weather Observation System.
Advanced Weather Observation System. So it's located at Lake Havasu City Airport, also known as HII in the airport directory. There's your fun fact for the day. So AWAS measures the current weather conditions of the airport, including current construction activities, temporary safety hazards, wind direction, wind speed, barometric pressure for pilots, so they can set their altimeters to determine accurate altitude prior to landing, availability of lighting in the vicinity of the airport, visibility differences, temperatures, and cloud ceilings. And all these factors help pilots determine if it's safe to land at the airport or not. So it's a pretty crucial piece of infrastructure. So it can be obtained by pilots and the public through several methods. The airport has a designated phone number, which is listed there, that anyone can call. I highly recommend it, I learned something new. The system operates 24/7 and updates every 15 to 20 minutes. There's also in-flight aircraft systems that can obtain the information as far as 10 miles away from the airport. It's also published in the Southwest Airport Facilities Directory, and published on aviation websites used by a majority of pilots. So the existing AWAS system was installed in 2008, so it's pushing 15 years old, and has passed its useful design life and needs to be replaced. Parts have become antiquated, expensive, or not available at all. Should the system experience another breakdown, the airport will have to issue a permanent notice to air missions, which would affect the usability of the airport until the system is upgraded. So the scope work for design was requested from CNS Companies, so this can be task order number four under their master professional services agreement. They're going to develop a schematic design phase, identify conflicts with deviations from FAA standards, develop a draft construction phasing and operations plan, advise us on matters relating to design, prepare preliminary and final contract drawings and specifications, as well as an opinion of probable construction cost, and assist us in the advertisement of the project and issuance of bid documents. And they're also going to provide construction management services for us, pre-bid conference, addenda to the bid documents, review bids, conduct the pre-construction conference, prepare review and approve progress payments, provide daily inspection services, and then submit final documents to us and a DOT with project closeout. Funding for this is from the Arizona Department of Transportation in the amount of $315,000, and the city has a 10% match in the amount of $31,500. So we're asking to approve task order number four to the master services agreement with CNS Companies for Design and Construction Management Services for the Airport Advanced Weather Observation System in the amount of $59,525.99. And without all type questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for members of the council for Mr. Teal? Vice Mayor Lane?
I just want to reiterate this, the whole reason for this, and the reason this is so important for the, the public, we don't have a tower. So since we don't have an air traffic control tower, this is how the pilots get their information. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, this is a public hearing, would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for further discussion or possible motion.
Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Moses?
I move to approve task order number four for professional services with CNS Companies, Inc. for the Design, Construction Management Services for an Airport Advanced Weather Observation System, AWAS project, in the amount of $59,525.99.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Moses, and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item 7.5, is approve the cooperative purchase for the refurbishment of one 2006 E1 Cyclone II pumper engine and authorize the use of $62,392.30 in the American Rescue Plan ARPA funds, and broker services for the sale of one 2001 Emergency One 100-foot aerial quint from Fire Trucks Unlimited LLC. Chief Palaus.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members. Before you is a request as part of our five-year plan for a vehicle replacement and refurbish program that we have established, we are asking to use Sourcewell as our cooperative purchase agreement to refurbish one pumper, and we're also using their service to list our, our 100-foot aerial quint ladder, that is our reserve rig, it is our, our third truck that we have in, in our fleet. The funding for this is in our fiscal budget in the amount of $320,000, that's why we are asking to use ARPA funds and authorization to use the $62,392.30. So it's a total for the refurb through the cooperative purchase is a total of $382,392.30. We're also using the, the broker services through Fire Trucks Unlimited, they have the specialties, they will handle the inquiries, the, the marketing, they will get a percentage of what we sell the, the vehicle for, and that money that is received from that sale will be, the proceeds will be, go back into the general fund. They do get a percentage. We are going to do our best to look at the market and use their professional guidance through their broker fees to sell that apparatus. If you have any questions or need any clarifications, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief Palaus. Can you speak just a little bit, we've already received one of our refurbished trucks back, and how, how did that go?
So it went well, the, we received it back in October of 2022, it was one of our pairs. We're very happy with the refurb project and the process. It took roughly about just under 10 months, we're projecting that same, it's a lot better than waiting two years for a new engine, which in sense, we're refurbishing this older engine to actually be a new engine. So we look forward to working with them again, we're very happy and pleased with the service and continuing this plan with us, and actually, cost savings too.
Yeah, excellent, and again, thank you for your leadership on, on being forward-thinking on ways that we can reduce the expense, but still achieve all the equipment needs that we have for the department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments from members of the council for the chief? All right, this is a public hearing, would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
I'd, I'd like to hear opinions on why the refurb money goes back into the general fund. Why wouldn't it go back to ARPA? Or you, you kind of see where I'm going with this? That, that's my, that's the only question I had when it came up.
So I'll take a, a hit at that real quick, is fire is paid for out of the general fund, and so the ARPA dollars are one-time monies that were identified, so what the chief is asking for this evening is, we already have budgeted $382,000 for it, the cost overruns is what he's asking for of ARPA. Yes, that $62,000 is, is for ARPA dollars to refurbish the fire truck, period, and now we have another issue that we're talking about, which is listing a fire truck for sale, and the proceeds of those sales would come back into the general fund, which is the department in which fire is operated out of.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Entertain a motion?
Mayor motion?
Vice Mayor Lane?
I move to approve the cooperative purchase for the refurbishment of one 2006 E1 Cyclone II pumper engine in the amount of $382,392.30, and authorize the use of $62,392.30 in American Rescue Act plan funds, and broker services for the sale of one 2001 Emergency One 100-foot aerial quint. Authorize the city manager to sign the agreements, and authorize city staff to exercise the option to renew for an additional one-year term.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane, and a second from Councilmember Campbell. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, item eight is our call to the public, this is an opportunity where citizens have to address the city council on items within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. Your comments are limited to three minutes, again, there is a light indicator box next to Ms. Williams, green means you have, have time, yellow means one minute's remaining, red means that your three minutes is up. Again, we ask that you address your comments directly to the council, if you have any of those, you don't have to sign up, and we didn't have anyone sign up, but if anyone would like to address this at call to the public, keeping in mind that this is not a two-way conversation, we can only listen intently. Ms. Toy?
Yes, first, I'd like to say, I was wondering if Chenoweth Drive and the highway, if that was in the city's jurisdiction, or is that the state jurisdiction or the county jurisdiction? Because when I was driving it today, going up toward Lowe's, the lane, the asphalt, there's no, there's a light, says turn left, and a light for a straight lane, and then there's another light, the three traffic light, normal, and there's no indication of a left turn only lane, so I ended up blocking traffic behind me, because I wasn't quite certain where I was supposed to be, like, if I wasn't turning right on, to go on the highway, I was going up toward Lowe's. So the street was completely unclear as to how I was supposed to use it, except, and of course, the truck in front of me was really tall and blocked the lights, I didn't see the left turn arrow until afterwards. And the other thing I would like to make a statement of, since I was accused of being, saying that Mr. Dolan, Councilmember Dolan, was being maligned or something, actually, I was really proud of the fact that during the meeting, that he was addressed and asked by the mayor, would he agree, or did he care if the price gouging for gas stations was addressed at the call to the public, I mean, on the next, one of the agendas. Mr. Dolan was asked, as the owner of a gas station, he said, do you care if we discuss it? And Mr. Dolan said, no, I don't care, I'm good with it. I greatly appreciate that, as a citizen, that our council is willing to discuss things, even if it's something they don't agree on, or something that could affect them. So I just want to be sure that you realize that, in my opinion, Mr. Dolan isn't being, didn't get put on the agenda, because he, I don't believe he sat there and tried to hide it from being on the agenda, when he was sitting there in the public meeting going, yes, put it on the agenda, please, I don't have an issue with discussing it. So if somehow, something I said made you believe that other people perceive Mr. Dolan for preventing things to be put on the agenda, I want you to know that I wasn't thinking that at all. I don't blame any of you for things not getting on the agenda. Obviously, if it's not within the purview of the city, then it doesn't get on the agenda. But perhaps you guys could explain to the citizens what exactly is in the purview of the city council? Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Toy. Would anyone else like to address the city at call? Would anyone else like to address the City at call to the public? Yeah, please, just to make clear the podium, state your name for the record.
My name is Josiah Barquette. I'm a student at Lake Havasu High School. I'm 18 years old and I just wanted to put the idea, seeing as it's not a two-way conversation, like you said, the, that I think a lot of, from what I've seen today, people are misunderstanding a idea being put forward as a direct attack on other members of the council. And I feel like the idea that having a conversation about it and putting views forward aren't direct attacks on people, they're just ideas. And that's why we have democracy, right? So we can talk about ideas and contemplate them between two people. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the City Council during call to the public? All right, seeing none, we'll close the call to the public. Item nine, current events. Are there any council committee reports? I have an update from the Mojave County Water Authority. Mr. Knutson mentioned it. Ms. Gary and I, along with Ms. Kelly, General Counsel for Mojave County Water Authority, attended with other river mayors and teams the oral arguments in federal court. We filed an amicus brief along with the other mayors along the Colorado River opposing the Greenstone transfer. As you are aware, they were hopeful to hear back on the injunction that the county, Mojave County, La Paz County, Yuma County and the city of Yuma had filed a lawsuit against Bureau of Reclamation and our amicus supports that in opposition to the transfer. We're hopeful to hear back in the next 30 days or so. The defendants wanted to hear back by March 31st. The judge has some scheduling conflicts and wants to report back by April 30th. So they're working on what that's going to be. They're going to have to file something with the court by Friday to let them know and then the judge will let us know when a decision will be made. We also are at Lake Mead, 114% of snowpack on the median right now of this year, which is fantastic news. As it was reported to us in the past, we need several years like that to help really make a dent in the drought, but nonetheless, that is positive news. We're also working on having a meeting with the Attorney General to help us in this cause as well as getting an audience with the governor to be able to have her briefed on what our concerns are up here in this area. And I'll keep you posted on that. And then I was also re-elected as chairman of the Mojave County Water Authority for another year. Are there any other council committee reports? All right, seeing none, we, our future meetings are Tuesday, March 28, 2023 at 6:00 PM. So it's still going to be 6:00 PM, even though we had action today to move it to 5:30. It'll be 6:00 PM next, on Tuesday, March 28. We also, on Tuesday, April 11th, 2023, will have a regular meeting at 6:00 PM as well because the new ordinance won't go into effect for 30 days. Are there any future discussion items? Motion to adjourn? All right, we have a motion to adjourn. Thank you all for being here. Be kind and we'll see you next time.